Call the meeting back to order. We have two workshop items, but before we do that, we have a regular agenda item. And so we have item 3A1 and 2. This is for the clerk and comptroller. And one is for warrant list and the other is contracts. Oh, we need to... Because we were on recess? All right. Okay. Thought we had already done that, but before we went to lunch, but okay. Well, you will start with a roll call.
Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I would like, need a motion. Are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions, Madam Administrator?
No, ma'am.
Motion to prove the agenda as published.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner, seconded by Commissioner Moreno. All in favor? All opposed?
Motion to receive and file on 3A1.
Okay. So we have a motion on item 3A1, which is a warrants list. We have a second. Second from Commissioner Sacks. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve 3A2.
We have a motion on 3A2, which is the contracts and settlements for the clerk. We have a second from Commissioner Moreno. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right. So moving on, we will begin our first...
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, County Attorney, you have something.
Yeah, if I can move on behalf of the county attorney's office, 3B1, which pertains... Or motion to approve and file 3B1, which pertains to the commissions and bonds of the newly-elected county commissioners and the reelected county commissioner.
Oh, very good. We have a motion by Commissioner Kerner and a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. All in favor? All opposed? That motion also carries seven to zero. Now we'll move on with our workshop items, number four. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Clinkstale for your presentation, sir. Would you like to introduce who's joining you?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Well, what we have before you right now is what we call "Strategy at a Glance." All of the components of our strategic plan are right before you. Our mission, our vision, goals, our core values, and our six strategic priorities. I have with me my senior analyst of performance management, Marcella, my boss, Sheri. You want to say anything, Sheri, before we get started?
No, we can get started.
Today, we have actually been intentional about breaking down silos and creating six strategic cross-department teams to address your six strategic priorities. These six strategic priorities were approved in 2018. So today, you're going to hear six cross-department teams, which we have actually been... Have been put together for the last four years that are working on your six strategic priorities. First up, if we go to the next slide, what we've actually done is we've asked all of departments, "If you spend time, money, or resources in this strategic priority, we need someone from your department on that team." So what you have before you is a matrix of all of the departments and how they've been allocated to the six cross-department teams. Today, those cross-department teams are going to present to you. We have a lot of information to share with you. And first up is going to be public safety.
All right. Good afternoon. Congratulations, Mayor Weiss, on your promotion. And congratulations to the new Commissioners. We're happy to be here today. My name is Jimmy Davis. I'm the Director of Aquatics for Parks and Recreation Department. Public safety is one of the county's identified strategic priorities. This presentation highlights the efforts of the Public Safety Cross-Departmental Team for Fiscal Year 2022. This presentation is truly a team effort, and I would like to thank all of our team members for their hard work and dedication on this team. Our team has four goals, as presented on this slide. Enhance public awareness through safety education, prepare for, respond to, and recover from all emergencies, ensure the overall safety of our community, and improve the overall health and well-being of our community. Let's take a look at goal number one. We continue to address public safety needs in our community and want to emphasize that awareness is a critical component to public safety, which is provided through various platforms. Last year, our team created the "Keep a New Safe" campaign, which aired on Channel 20 through the County Connection Program. These are the episodes for 2022, which include previously aired episodes and new episodes that we recorded. Through fire rescue alone, over 5 million safety messaging impressions have been completed in fiscal year 2022, addressing a variety of topics through various mediums. The Drowning Prevention Coalition, the Aquatics Division, and Palm Beach County Fire Rescue collaborated and conducted water safety presentations, reaching over 75,000 people in 2022. To help our public understand the leading causes of death in our community and to allocate resources to preventable fatalities, the Medical Examiner's Office provides data to help track characteristics and comparisons of death trends with other counties in the state of Florida. As you can see on this slide, information is readily shared in various manners, including through the Medical Examiner's Twitter page. Planning, zoning, and building staff interact with the public regarding many aspects of current and future infrastructure development, including the benefits of obtaining building permits with inspections and the importance of hiring licensed contractors when performing work. Additionally, PZB works with local high school students to encourage a career as a building safety professional. The Building Division promotes many online resources, including flood zone maps to educate residents and encourages property owners to look up flood zones to be better prepared for flood hazards. In September, the CJC, PBSO, the School District, and other community organizations held a Palm Beach County Aware and Care 5K and Community Resource Fair at Okeechobee Park to bring awareness on how to prevent mass violence. Additionally, the CJC, in partnership with PBSO and Palm Beach State College, held two sessions of a trauma-informed "Train the Trainer" class for law enforcement, criminal justice system stakeholders, community-based organizations, and several county staff. Our "Safety First" program keeps county employees from injury and prevents potential hazards to the general public. This allows for continued services to our community while ensuring that our public remains safe. We are pleased to announce that six county departments received Excellence in Safety Awards in 2022. Our Risk Management Department assisted each county department to develop a safety program that would meet the eligibility standards for an award from the Safety Council of Palm Beach County. Awards recognize safety initiatives, such as starting a safety program or enhancing programs. Nominations came from private and public sector organizations that included neighboring counties and municipalities in the area. At this time, I'd like to introduce Rob Shelton, Director of Consumer Affairs, to continue with goal number two.
Thanks, Jimmy. Our second goal is to prepare for, respond to, and recover from all emergencies. This was readily evident with the approach of Hurricane Ian this past September, where several measures were taken to ensure the public's safety. We activated the Emergency Operations Center to a Level 2 and responded to tornado touchdowns. Hurricane Nicole didn't get the memo that fiscal year 22 was over, but it did give us a jumpstart on material for next year's presentation. More to come on that. Staff and resources were deployed to impacted communities in Palm Beach County and on the west coast of Florida. Efforts to support impacted communities continue to this day. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Team coordinates to maintain a response time quicker than the highest acceptable industry standard of seven and a half minutes, even dealing with the continued impacts of COVID. Our capital improvement plan to address new stations, along with our increased staffing, is projected to slow down the increase in current response times. Fire Rescue onboarded 72 new recruits in four recruit classes during 2022 to support the 49 fire stations throughout the county. Additionally, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue is now a member of the Elite Insurance Service Office Class 1 designation, allowing for lower insurance premiums for residential and businesses alike. Unsafe Structure Investigation is an integral part of ensuring damaged buildings do not pose a risk to the public. Twenty-nine active unsafe structure cases have been investigated during fiscal year 22, including from recent tornado touchdowns resulting in demolition of 16 dangerous buildings. New rules became effective July 1, 2022, related to condo building three stories or taller. The Board of County Commissioners approved the building recertification program adhering to state standards. In fiscal year 22, the Mobile Integrated Health Program served more than 4,000 patients, with almost 2,100 of those occurring in the addiction program. There was an 84% decrease in EMS use for patients who participated and accepted referrals through the addiction program. In order to maintain a quick response time to emergency calls, the county piloted one of the first projects with AT&amp;T Mobility to improve location accuracy for wireless 911 callers. Key projects include coordination on updating emergency activation devices in schools, adding Florida Highway Patrol as a 911 center, and integration of burglar alarm data directly to field vehicles to improve response times. With the input of many stakeholders, consumer protections relating to the towing and immobilization services ordinance were strengthened in August of 2022. Continuing with goal three and response times, the number of service requests coming from the public to animal care and control has started climbing akin, but staff have adjusted work schedules to focus on the days and times that we historically get the most calls to ensure response times. All county employees receive human trafficking and awareness training. Since the launch of the program, 3,580 employees received the training, with 446 of those occurring in fiscal year 22. Additionally, Consumer Affairs integrated human trafficking awareness information as part of the licensing process to more than 1,500 adult entertainers and 1,000 vehicle-for-hire driver applicants. Efforts extend beyond training and include coordination with the Palm Beach Sheriff's Office, Human Trafficking Task Force for identification of potential victims, as well as addressing long-term mental health impacts. Between January and August of 2022, there were more than 1,200 injunctions for protections issued due to intimate partner violence. To help address this, Victim Services, in conjunction with the Criminal Justice Commission and aid to victims of domestic abuse, received a $1 million grant to develop a coordinated community response team. This team will focus on creating consistent response protocols, comprehensive service referrals for victims, and accountability for offenders, thereby increasing public safety. Ocean Rescue takes a proactive approach by educating the public about potential hazards prior to the individual needing assistance. This graph shows the number of preventive actions taken by county lifeguards over the past four years. When speaking about public safety, drinking water is a public health and safety priority. Our laboratory scientists collect over 13,000 water samples throughout our distribution system and analyze an average of 80,000 tests per year. We're talking about millions of gallons of water produced per day. Moving from water to land, the figures above represent the number of individuals receiving agricultural, plant nursery, or landscape safety training designed to protect workers from job-related injuries. Figures also include individuals receiving pesticide safety trainings. This is especially important in order to maintain our water safe from pesticides and keeping produce safe for our community to eat. The Building Division issued nearly 75,000 permits and conducted close to 215,000 inspections, with a total improvement in construction value of just over $2.25 billion. In 2022, code enforcement investigated over 8,000 complaints and issued 13,000 notices of violation. In addition to maintenance and airfield safety and regulatory inspections, there are several enhanced security inspections that are also tracked by the airport. This consisted of 6,817 separate enhanced inspections totaling 1,750 hours of inspections in 2022, completed by airport staff. Felony and misdemeanor bookings over the past six years have continued to decline, but the top crimes for each are distinctly different. Over the past two years, the top misdemeanor bookings were for failure to appear, battery, trespass, and resisting an officer. However, felony emissions were led by violation of probation, drug possession, burglary, and weapons. This slide is a continuation of the Safety Justice Challenge reform work to safely reduce jail incarceration and eliminate racial inequity. This chart shows the average population of misdemeanor offenses by race. Over the past years, the average population for blacks, whose population represents less than 20% of the county's population, continues to widen. At this point, the CJC is unable to determine the cause, but is looking deeper into the data and has several pilot projects under review for testing to determine the best approach. This slide looks into the felony average daily population data by race and ethnicity. During this time, the ADP for whites consistently declined. The Latino population remained relatively the same and has continuously widened for blacks. At the onset of the pandemic, the numbers began to drop significantly. This could in part be attributed to the shutdowns and the judicial administrative order that reduced bonds for certain third-degree felonies from 3,000 to 1,000. The administrative order has since reverted back to the $3,000 bond amount. Further, to address these racial disparities, the CJC is implementing a number of research projects to determine impact. For example, the Next Step Initiative serves a population of time-served individuals with behavioral health challenges. Another project the CJC has in the works is to implement the Felony Probation Bus in partnership with the Florida Department of Corrections. Using MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge grant funding, the Palm Beach County donated a custom-designed bus to transport probation officers to the appropriate communities so individuals can report near where their homes are located. Goals of this new program include reducing technical violations, increasing employment, addressing transportation issues, and improving the relationships between probation officers and their clients. Now I'll hand it over to Rochelle Woolburg, Curator and Director of Mounts Botanical Garden, to address goal four.
Thank you, Rob. Good afternoon, Mayor Weiss, Vice Mayor Sacks, Commissioners, Administrator Baker. Just wanted to mention from our team where the gray bags originated this morning. Should have received a copy of the Public Safety's Guide to Services in a token of our thanks for all that you do and are about to do. Happy Thanksgiving. So as we transition to goal number four, we pivot toward the overall health and well-being of our community. And to address this goal, I'd like to begin with the Ryan White Program for Palm Beach County. Ryan White provides medical care and support services to more than 8,400 people with HIV in Palm Beach County. Currently, it's developing and implementing new initiatives to diagnose, treat, prevent, and respond to HIV. And these efforts are increasing public awareness and advancing the program's goal to end the HIV epidemic in Palm Beach County by 2030. In the discussions had within our Public Safety Cross-Department Team, we recognize that improving access for individuals with disabilities is a hallmark and measure of our community's well-being. And the Mobi mat that is featured is an example of one such intervention that allows a disabled person to easily gain access to water and enjoy the snorkel trail. The Mobi mats were purchased through the Coastal Initiative Grant, which covered up to 50% of the cost. And through our Gift to Parks program, Lisa's Beach Highways and Paula Jaeger donated a new beach wheelchair that is being utilized at South Inlet Park. And the wheelchair featured on the slide makes it much easier to move a disabled individual across the sandy and rocky terrain of our beaches. This slide highlights the work of ACC, Animal Care and Control, continues to focus on improving the live release rates for cats and dogs, which stand at 83% and 91%, respectively. And additional contracted spay and neuter facilities have enabled Animal Care and Control to provide even more low-cost options to pet owners living in our community. In fiscal year 2022, 51% of all sexual assault victims had their forensic exams performed at the Butterfly House of Wellington Regional Medical Center. The Butterfly House is Palm Beach County's first sexual assault response medical services center. And Victim Services staff provided an average of 14.3 separate service encounters for each victim of a violent crime. Just last December, Victim Services, the Certified Rape Crisis Center, and Mothers Against Drunk Driving hosted the first annual victim remembrance memorial event. And we want to conclude by highlighting our Youth Services Department's Family Violence Intervention Program, which was developed as a diversion program to address the unique problems of families in which a child or children have committed acts of domestic violence. Upon successfully completing the program, a youth's charges are dropped and the record is expunged. In 2022, 106 youth were diverted to the program, with 82 successfully completing it. And we are very proud to say that the Family Violence Intervention Initiative has received several accolades. It was a recipient of a National Association of Counties Award. And so this concludes our updates for goals one through four. As for next steps for our Public Safety Cross-Department Team, we'll continue to provide safety education to the public, collaborate further with various county departments and outside agencies on public safety opportunities, and maintain safety measures at the forefront of everything we do. And at this time, we're happy to answer any of your questions. All of our members are here. Thank you.
Right. Any members of the board have any questions on this presentation? I don't see any. I just have one question, and that is regarding Next Gen 911. Is there... Can you... Is there any update on where we are on that implementation?
Stephanie Shanahan Hall, Director of Public Safety, is here, and she can address that question for you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Our Next Gen 911 efforts are moving along rather quickly. We have replaced all the equipment within all of our 15 P-SAPS here in Palm Beach County. We have dual platforms, so in case anything goes down, we're able to divert calls to other P-SAPS. We're actually already on text 911. We've been looking at video versions of possibilities of sending in video information. That right now is being looked at and researched on what the best capabilities are for our communicators. Is that information that they want to be receiving as the 911 call comes in? But as far as our NG 911 goes, we are really looked at as one of the best in the nation. A lot of people are piloting with our county to see, you know, what technology they can bring to our county to best improve those calls that are answered and received by 911.
Thank you. Right. Anything else?
Just want Stephanie to inform the board what P-SAP stands for.
Excuse me. Sorry. So P-SAP stands for Public Safety Answering Point. So anytime somebody calls 911 here in Palm Beach County, law enforcement agency answers it. So it would either be your Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office or one of your other municipalities. We have a primary P-SAP, which is your law enforcement, that will answer the 911 call, and then they'll determine the emergency, whether it's law enforcement-related or emergency medical services-related. And then if it's determined that it's emergency medical services-related, it'll be transferred to a fire rescue department. So your county fire rescue or another municipality will answer it.
Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Just a comment. Just a comment on page six. I'm looking at your community events, the 50,000 attendees. That's... Thank you for getting 50,000 people out there to attend our events. And I saw that there's a million hits for balcony fire and girl safety. That's impressive. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do. And Keith, thank you for joining me. And Marcel, thank you for joining me when we took this show on the road. It's important for our residents to see just exactly what we do and that we aren't in silos. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Rob, just, I know a couple of years ago, we did the nursing badge. How's that going? And how's that, you know, basically protecting our residents in the county?
Thanks for the question. So we're the first county in the state of Florida that passed a home health, home caregiver ID badge requirement. So the Sheriff's Office brought to our attention, there were a lot of vulnerable adults being taken advantage of by their caregiver. And so the idea was to require that all caregivers get a Level 2 criminal background screening prior to the issuance of an ID badge. If they have a disqualifying criminal offense, then we wouldn't issue the badge. There are... To date, we have over 25,000 caregiver ID badges in place, and we have worked very closely with our stakeholders. I know, Commissioner Bernard, we worked closely when we did a revision to the ordinance recently to make sure we had some buy-in, but it's going very smooth. We launched an online portal application. So literally, it's a very efficient process for people trying to obtain this ID badge.
Thank you very much, Rob. Appreciate it.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all very much for your presentation.[1585.86][1585.86](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, public safety. Commissioners, next we have Substance Use and Behavior Disorders Cross-Departmental Team.
Good afternoon. My name is Jill Singer, and I'm with the Office of Behavioral Health and Substance Use Disorders. Is that better? As the Substance Use and Behavior Disorders Cross-Departmental Team, we endeavor to be a beacon of hope for the residents of Palm Beach County who are living with and/or are impacted by substance use or mental health disorders. Our team is comprised of 16 diverse individuals from 10 county departments, and our mission is to highlight the partnerships and programs available and to assist individuals, families, and support the development of systems of care related to substance use and mental health disorders. The Board established Substance Use and Behavior Disorders as one of its six strategic priorities, and this team has been implementing the Board's goals that are shown on this slide, to move Palm Beach County towards a coordinated and integrated recovery-oriented system of care. By supporting access to prevention, education, and treatment services that are recovery-focused and person-centered, we increase our residents' overall well-being. Beginning with the adoption of the first opioid response plan in 2017, much has been accomplished to combat the opioid crisis in Palm Beach County. This slide shows highlights the timeline for accomplishments, starting with the adoption of the opioid response plan in 2017. Through some recent achievements, which we have received strong support from the Board and many community members with lived experience. With community organization and the Board's support, we continue to make strides and systemic change. The graphic on the left is a depiction of our current system. The palm tree represents the departments included in our cross-departmental team, and the boat represents our community-based partners who collaborate with us to provide services to individuals and families who are affected by substance use and/or mental health disorders. This year, we focused on the eight dimensions of wellness and the Passport to Health, developed by Dr. Swarbrick and created by Parks and Recreation. This is what the Passport to Health looks like. And if you scan the QR code, it will pull up an electronic version of this Passport to Health. And you should also have them before you. For the rest of our presentation, we will highlight how each of our departments connect with these eight dimensions of wellness. This slide shows how we partner with many community organizations. This slide shows how we partner with many community organizations, I'm sorry, community agencies and organizations that address social, emotional, and environmental factors. Recent studies by Harvard's Recovery Research Institute show that having persons with lived experience support individuals in recovery increases positive outcomes, particularly for those in early stages of recovery. We use this research, as well as overdose rates, fire rescue, and other data, to support increasing the number of recovery community centers and organizations in Palm Beach Here you see the outcomes from the use of the Recovery Capital Index Instrument, which we fondly call the RCI, which was launched in late 2020. David Whitezach, who's quoted in that upper quadrant, is the developer of the RCI and founder of Commonly Well. The RCI is a validated instrument that has been peer-reviewed and published. It's comprised of three domains: personal capital, social capital, and cultural capital, each of which yields individual domain scores and a total RCI score based on one hundred. The RCI provides a comprehensive baseline score that is similar to a blood pressure check. It allows for the tracking of client progress over time and leads to tailored supports on an individualized basis. Through data analysis, policymakers can measure the community's overall recovery wellness. Thus far, county data show that individuals are demonstrating increased resilience, coping skills, and have developed adequate social supports through resources that have been provided. These are essential components for positive recovery outcomes. Note that we have deployed over two thousand RCIs, and we have a completion rate of well over ninety-five percent, which is very high if you look across other counties and states. Here, you see outcomes, oh, sorry. As part of Team PBC, the Medical Examiner's Office works diligently to prioritize support to all families and our community, especially as it relates to providing support to those grieving the loss of a loved one. Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Our nationally accredited office works in close partnership to provide data and supports a multitude of organizations in their efforts to identify trends and areas for further As you see from the 2020 data on the left, we still have more work to do to prevent suicide and overdose deaths. Although Palm Beach County has a higher overdose death rate compared to state and national figures, we have seen a decrease in opioid-related deaths in the last five years. Palm Beach County's drug overdose ratio is high, in part due to the fact that Palm Beach County has well over fifty percent of the total number of recovery beds in the state. Suicide deaths in Palm Beach County continue to be on a downward trend and are lower than both state and national rates. The maps on this slide and the next were created using the Medical Examiner's data in collaboration with Palm Tran to give a visual representation of incident locations. This map shows overdose deaths in Palm Beach County this calendar year through September thirtieth, 2022. Using predictive forecasting based on overdose data, type of drug, total deaths, and place of injury, one of the top five areas identified as being most at risk for high-drug overdose deaths was Lake Worth Beach. As a result, the Second Brick and Mortar Recovery Community Center is now under development in Lake Worth Beach. This is a perfect example of using data to inform decisions. This slide shows suicide deaths. With maps such as this, we can identify high-needs areas to inform funding decisions for programs and services. This type of data provides opportunities for Palm Beach County to partner with municipalities to ensure education, support services, and prevention programs are available where they are most needed. In other words, to provide easy access to both substance use and mental health services before these issues result in death. At this time, I would like to turn over the presentation to Dr. Twyla Taylor with Youth Services Department.
Thank you, Jill. Good afternoon. Those last two slides were tragic yet accurate. So how can we help people find the resources they need before it's too late? This slide showcases a project in draft that our team has been working on with the assistance of Palm Tran. The final product will be a map of various mental health and substance use programs and associated bus routes for people to easily access our system of care. This will be incorporated into the Palm Tran Writer's Guide for prevention, treatment, and recovery purposes. Of course, at the forefront of addiction and mental health crisis care is fire rescue. The Mobile Integrated Health Team supports patients and families after their 911 call through a specialized team of community paramedics and medical social workers. This team serves as a bridge to county and community resources. Serving over four thousand patients in 2022, our Mobile Integrated Health Team is removing barriers and shining the light on resources available to assist patients and families. Our addiction program connected with two thousand sixty-five patients this year and with a program outcome of fifty-six percent of patients accepting recovery resources. The Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office has several resources in place to keep the community safe, to include a co-responder community threat management team and a crisis intervention team training. The Sheriff's Office has not only joined forces with other local, state, and federal law enforcement organizations, but also with local mental health providers, the Palm Beach County School Board, and higher education organizations to ensure every effort has been made to keep the community safe. Through cross-departmental partnerships, the county offers many outreach events. For example, Youth Services and Parks and Recreation offered a combined total of one hundred and seventy-five outreach education programs. Youth Services also collaborated with Palm Tran to put free mental health resources in English, Spanish, and Creole on bus screens for all thirty-one bus routes. Youth Services, like many other county departments, also covers the eight domains of wellness. And on a celebratory note, we were just awarded Department-wide Certification in the Sanctuary Model of Trauma-Informed Care, which helps clients and staff build resiliency and overcome adversity. We are the first government organization in Florida and fourth in the nation to receive this certification. Thank you. Mental health remains a primary concern for our community members, and Team PBC has provided over seven thousand therapy sessions for Palm Beach County youth and families. And outcome data shows that eighty-eight percent of participants in therapy services report increased resiliency, which is a key to overcoming adversity and trauma. This year, Victim Services and Jewish Family Services certified sixteen non-therapy staff in mental health first aid. We created a support and debrief meeting to help with vicarious trauma, and held a hybrid mental health awareness month, where staff participated in mindfulness, art therapy, and self-care activities. As mentioned in the previous presentation with Public Safety, through collaboration with Victim Services, Aid to Victims of Domestic Violence, and the Criminal Justice Commission, the county received a one million dollar grant to implement a coordinated community response team to address intimate partner violence. Additionally, a finding balance and wellness in the midst of trauma training was facilitated for over three hundred faculty and staff at the John I. Leonard High School Back-to-School Event. The Parks and Recreation Department also provides diverse programs that cover all dimensions of wellness and is committed to enhancing the quality of life for people of all ages and abilities. We build positive relationships and community connections to reduce stigma, facilitate conversations around substance use and mental health disorders, and help people, help direct people to the resources that they need. Our professionals are primary providers of outdoor spaces and activities that help reduce stress and improve mental health. Access to these spaces, programs, and services remains essential to community vitality and is a key factor in advancing health equity, improving individual and community-level health outcomes, and enhancing quality of life. Palm Beach County Library System also serves as a place for members of the community to gather and connect through multiple wellness domains. By providing a diverse selection of classes, research services, social services, reading materials, and databases, libraries contribute to a better quality of life and improved mental health. Libraries promotes positive mental health, self-care, and mindfulness. And in fiscal year 2022, approximately eight million books and materials were borrowed, and over thirty-one hundred activities were presented to more than thirty thousand library members. The Criminal Justice Commission covers many domains of health to include a research program that provided housing and case management services for high utilizers. One of the most significant results of this program indicated that participants decreased recidivism by ninety-one percent. Ninety-one percent. That's amazing. This slide also highlights many of the collaborations and contributions to include trauma-informed training, community policing forums, and a community-wide awareness campaign called Aware and Care Palm Beach County that was also mentioned during the previous presentation. So let's bring it back full circle to our system of care. We could not do this without our community partners, and throughout the year, our team invited multiple community partners to our meetings. We learned more about each other and identified new areas for collaboration and synergy, breaking silos both within and outside of county departments. Each of these organizations is crucial in enhancing prevention, treatment, and recovery for those struggling with substance use and mental health issues. In closing, here are our next steps as we continue to facilitate interdepartmental collaboration and community partnerships to drive innovative and accessible programs. On behalf of everyone on the Substance Use and Behavior Disorders Team, we want to say a very special thank you to Marcelle Miller and Keith Klinkscale. And we also thank you for your time and attention this afternoon, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, D U S N E O I C. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Going back to Slide eleven, in regards to seeing that the overdose deaths are mostly located in Lake Worth and Green Acres, how are we working with both municipalities to continue to address this issue since that's where the deaths are taking place? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard. It's a great question. In our RCO development process, we have a very bottom-up. So in Lake Worth, that development process is very community-oriented, inclusive of elected officials and city administrators. So that participatory process is not only of government representatives, but also community members.
And I know you mentioned Lake Worth. What about Green Acres? Are we reaching out to them also to work with, Green Acres?
Yeah. So our outreach is absolutely ongoing.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. Darn microphone thing. That's a technical term. So I'm looking at Page ten, which is the data tells a story, and I noticed that it says that Palm Beach County has approximately fifty percent of the total recovery beds in the state of Florida. That's kind of scary. But, so when we talk about the overall overdoses, how many of those people are actually, and I know with HIPAA, you probably may not be able to answer this question, but how many of those people are actually non-residents of the state of Florida?
I believe the number is about twenty-five percent.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else?
And just to clarify, those are Florida recovery residents certified, the FAR certified beds?
Thank you.
And then I have one question. On Slide number ten, we're talking about the suicides, and you note how many are related to substance use. Does that also include alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you. It sounds amazing, and thank you for this presentation. I do just have one concern. How are we getting the information about the program out to the public for them to know what's available to them?
I can start, and then John, I don't know if you want to pick up there. I'm not sure what you mean by program, but...
Forgive me, the services that have kind of gone over in this presentation and what is going on out there. I mean, is there anything we're doing to inform people of pathways to help them, or where to go if they need help, that sort of thing?
Well, there's a lot, there's a first step at the Addiction Stabilization Unit, and from there, there's a handoff to one of the Recovery Community Centers and one of the organizations that are supported by peer supports, and there's warm handoffs along the way. I know that there's a big social media presence that is developing through our RCCs, our Recovery Community Centers. Palm Tran is partnering to send messages. There's Community Resource Guide, so...
And forgive me for those of you that don't know, I have two sisters that have died of a drug overdose. So this is kind of near and dear to me, and we didn't know where to go to get information about these programs. So I think it might be an amazing thing what you're doing. I would just like to see or maybe discuss some ideas of making sure that people are aware.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Commissioner Sax. Vice Mayor Sax, sorry.
It's okay. Marie is fine, too. I'm sorry to hear that, Commissioner. That is something that hits very close to your heart. Do we, and the question is really sort of a sound off as to how we get the information out. Do we go out to churches and synagogues and mosques to reach out? When you talk about community resources, are our religious organizations, are they also part of our outreach? And anybody can answer who knows that.
There is a strong recovery church movement, so the recovery churches are involved in some of the community processes, and they're certainly, they're able to share a lot of resources with their participants at the church. I don't know, John, if you want to say more?
Yes. Thank you again for the question. So, and you had Pastor Ray Whitley here, who provided public comment. He is vice chair of our newly established now advisory committee, and we do have other representation on the advisory committee from the faith community, but the conversations we're having now is actually establishing a actual subcommittee of faith-based individuals to really do a much more assertive outreach into the community and engaging that community much more robustly in our efforts. And I'm sorry, I have a respiratory issue, so if I'm grasping for breath, it is because I am. So, but thank you.
That's okay. Get closer to them. It might be a little helpful. Let's see if we can't do more than just reaching out to the faith-based community. There are churches all over Palm Beach County, churches and synagogues and mosques. They may not know about our services. There are some churches and religious institutions who do know and are involved in the recovery program, but there are many who are not. So I wonder if, at some point, you could let us know, and I know you're forming a subcommittee, how we can reach out in a greater boundless way to every religious institution, if we could, if they're interested, and what services we provide, because sometimes the first base is when somebody goes to their church or synagogue or mosque. So I wonder if we could make an effort to do that, and then you could let us all know. And also to schools. I remember my kids going to a grade school, and we had DARE, the DARE program, remember that years ago, DARE program? that years ago, DARE program? And the principal saying, you don't need to come here because we don't have any drugs in this school. Well, we, I'm sure there were, but that program reached out to all of the schools. Do we do that now? Good. And if we could, we could have sort of a report to all of us as to all the schools that we reach out to, and I guess it goes down to middle school now, middle school and high school, what we're doing in terms of the reach-out program, so we don't lose anybody in the cracks. I'd appreciate that. Again, maybe that'll help you out a little bit. Thank you so much, thank you staff, thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Dr. Klinkscale, I think that this subcommittee, it seems that you probably would want to add public safety in this subcommittee because they're doing some of the outreach, and it'd be great to infuse public safety to help with some of the outreach. So in that way, we can kind of like bolster how we're providing the information to the public.
There we go, give me a mic, I feel good. We do have victim services already on the team who represents public safety, but yes, we probably could add more from the public safety department as a whole to collaborate even further with this team. There is some crossover, absolutely.
Seeing some of the work that they're doing, I just think that with the question that Commissioner Baxter asked, I think that that would probably help it to do more outreach, so in that way, the residents would know exactly where they would find services.
Commissioner, you're hitting the nail on the head. When we talked about public safety last year, we realized that a lot of the community, a lot of the folks out in the residents did not know, was not aware of all the public safety, things that we have going on. So we made a focus for public safety last year to be on awareness. We need to do the same with the rest of the teams. The other thing that I've noticed just from your comments, we've been really intentional about breaking silos within the county, within these departments, but we also have, it takes a village, so we also have to make that same effort to break the silos with the municipalities, the thirty-nine municipalities, the faith-based organizations, and all the other nonprofits that are out there doing this work. And that's sort of going to be our focus for the next year and year and a half, is how do we actually get some of those conversations taking place with the faith-based organizations and nonprofits? Some of that's taking place today, but we can do more in terms of letting them know how great of a thing that we actually are providing for our residents.
All right, Administrator Baker?
One of the other things that we were lucky enough and this board supported was we've got a partnership with the healthcare district as well, and they've got a new system that when fire rescue picks up someone or the police picks them up, they can take them to the center on Forty-Fifth Street in Congress, and then they will wrap social services around them, working with the county, so that people will have a better feel of what else is out there. And I think this morning you did see just a clip of one gentleman that talked about how we helped him get back on track and get his family back. So that is one relationship that we will continue to grow. We have a number of financially assisted agencies that this board supports that deal strictly with drug recovery. And with the new committee this board officially established and the plan that this board approved, that's going to assist us in getting the word out further. We can always improve, but we have been working to get the word out. This was one of former Commissioner McKinley's major push, and so we've been working diligently at getting that done. But the healthcare district has come on board as one of our partners as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. As someone who's been in the nonprofit world for a very long time, I was so happy to hear you say, include nonprofit in your comments, and I know the nonprofit chamber might be an opportunity, if you haven't already spoken to them, they'd be a great place to do a presentation, because, you know, it just feeds out to the rest of them. There are, for those of you who don't know, and I think I've said this a hundred times, there are seventy-five hundred nonprofits in our county. So, and there are several that deal with this, or, you know, they're either in this space, or they service people that are in this space. So anytime you can reach out to them, there's a broad reach there. Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
The only thing I would add is I would love to see some sort of family support system, because if family members recognize when their loved one is going downhill before anyone else, and possibly before it reaches the point of, you know, medical services being called in, police, firefighters, paramedics, all that, just something to where maybe they could stop it before it gets to that point, and I think that would be like ideal versus just waiting till it's that bad.
Yeah, I can speak to that, as well as Jill and John, but you services focuses primarily on family therapy. It's so very important to get the family involved, whether it's substance use, mental illness, or co-occurring disorders. So we have a focus on that, absolutely. And I think what we started a year or so ago about the Substance Use Mental Health Disorder Guide that we started putting together, I think that maybe that would be a good thing for us to continue to work on, so it sort of summarizes all of the county's services and programs that are directly related to substance use and mental health.
And I just might add, in terms of family member, when we talk recovery community, we define it very broadly, inclusive of affected family members, allies, and other friends. So when we've done this community development process, family members are a very strong presence and voice, not only in providing care, but also in developing future services. So I appreciate your point.
And just one last remark, while we're talking about our residents and our community, it's also important to talk about our employees here in the county, and we do offer our employee assistance program. So when we do have county employees and family members who need assistance, we provide that service to our own as well.
All right, I see no other lights. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we guess can move on.
Okay, next we have housing and homelessness. Housing and homelessness cross-departmental team.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, County Administrator, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today on a subject that all of us really care about. My name's Adam Davis, I'm the Director of System Services for the Palm Beach County Library System, and it's my honor to serve as the co-chair for the Housing and Homelessness Cross-Departmental Team. Our team pulls together representatives of many county departments who have a passion for making housing more affordable for Palm Beach County residents and eliminating homelessness. This year, we were lucky enough to bring aboard PBSO Deputy James Mackey, who offered a new and different perspective to our work. Our goals have remained constant since the inception of our team, increase ability of those who work in the county to afford to live in the county, to reduce homelessness, and improve access to social services. As we all know, the housing crisis extends well beyond Palm Beach County's borders. We felt it was important to review some of the factors that have affected and exacerbated the crisis for many of our residents. As of September 2022, the unemployment rate in Palm Beach County reached pre-pandemic levels at 2.6% and has remained steady. The national rate, however, has recently been announced to have increased from 3.5% to 3.7%. Both of these charts show ten years of the prime interest rate and Consumer Price Index data. As you can see, the last one to two years are almost a vertical incline from previous years. While September's prime interest rate hit a ten-year high of 6.25, unfortunately, earlier this month, it was reported to be at 7%. The Consumer Price Index also shows another high at 10.7% in September in the tri-county area, but has more recently come down to 10.1%, which is good news. These two graphs shown depict eviction and foreclosure filings for the past ten years, including this year through June. Both show a downward trend for the last ten years, but keep in mind that starting in 2020, there were various forms of relief. These decreased numbers may be in part indicative of the great work that county government, government in general, and community agencies did to mitigate the poor economic conditions many faced over the last two years. However, if the first half of this year's numbers double during the second half, we will be in an upward trend for both evictions and foreclosures. Now let's take a closer look at housing in Palm Beach County with Carlos Serrano from the Department of Housing and Economic Development.
Thanks, Adam. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Carlos Serrano, Department of Housing and Economic Development. So this slide here demonstrates how over the past decade, local housing prices have increased faster than income, resulting in decreasing affordability. To the left, you see that ten years ago, back in 2013, median-priced home cost approximately 3.8 times median income. Now today, that same median-priced home costs almost seven times median income. Renting's no more affordable, the HUD 2022 fair market rent for a two-bedroom housing unit was $1,578 a month. To afford that rent, someone would need to earn about $63,000 a year, or just over $30 per hour. County's workforce housing program requires housing serving sixty to 140% of area median income, and all new residential developments of ten or more units in the unincorporated area. As of August 2022, more than 2,900 housing units have been required by the program, including 1,076 rental units and 389 homes for sale. Programs also generated $15 million of in-lu fee payments. During 2022, the program celebrated its 131st sale to a workforce housing program homebuyer. So during the past three years, the Department of Housing and Economic Development and its partners have assisted 3,204 housing units for very low, low, and moderate income persons. This is done through new construction, rehabilitation, acquisition, and mortgage assistance. This was achieved using grant funding from federal home and CDBG programs, the state ship program, and a large infusion, one-time infusion of stimulus dollars through the CARES Act. The charts break down the 3,200 units by activity type on the left chart, then on the right chart by the income group served. At this time, HED has allocated $29 million to nineteen different housing projects, which are under development currently, and which upon completion will result in an additional 1,499 housing units. In response to the growing housing crisis, during the past year, the Board of County Commissioners undertook a number of new initiatives. Of note is a housing dashboard, which is under development and will offer the public online access to information on workforce and affordable housing countywide. This slide shows some of the team's performance under fiscal year 2022, and summarizes the metrics that were detailed in the previous slides. Next up to the podium will be Wendy Tippett of the Department of Community Services, who will speak to the team's efforts as it relates to homelessness.
Good afternoon. So the next slide, this slide shows a number of households served, and how much funding was spent really since the beginning of COVID, March 1st of 2020, through September 30th to 22, thirty months. You can see how much money has been spent. We were able to spend this amount of funding in such a short period of time, thanks to the collaborative efforts between community services, libraries, our nonprofit partners. We give special thanks to county's ISS Department, their miracle workers, needless to say, who have worked many hours to ensure that the system was up and running efficiently during this time. Next slide. This is the Parks and Work Program. Since its inception, there have been 102 participants in the Parks to Work Program. Services offered in this program are case management, financial literacy, housing, clothing, food, medical services, and mental health services. This slide shows reentry program participants. Sixty-two percent of new enrollees in the reentry services were identified as homeless, once released from incarceration, and FY22. To address this, the allowable housing cost per client, which was a maximum of $6,500 per reentry participant, was increased to $10,000 for FY23. New partnerships over the past year helped to increase the opportunities for returned residents. Best practices and information sharing took center stage this year at the 2022 Reentry Summit, with over 256 registrants from around the country. And Zypan, is that right? Zypan, interesting, I meant to look up, where is Zypan? Secretary Dixon actually gave us kudos, gave that team kudos for the successful transition of these communities back into the, into the community. Next slide. The Homeless Resource Center. This slide shows the construction of progress made on the Homeless Resource Center 2, which is located in Lake Worth behind the senior center, with an estimated completion of the fall of 2023. If you haven't been by that site, I encourage you to do that, it's going up very quickly. It'll provide 74 beds of emergency shelter. The Lewis Center, which is located on 45th Street, also provides 60 beds of shelter. And the Anex Center at the Fairgrounds, which was open during COVID, is temporarily being used to house homeless until the Lake Worth Road facility is finished. It's currently housing about 107 residents. We also opened the Belle Glade Emergency Shelter and Pahokee Housing Programs, 40 units, which you heard about this morning. That was our COVID shelter. We sheltered quite a few folks that had been exposed to COVID during that time, so thank you for that. Program REACH is our only, it's on Henrietta Avenue, West Palm. It's our only dedicated shelter for families specifically. Hotels, we are using hotels because of the number of families on the street. Currently, there's anywhere between 35 and 40 hotel rooms that are active every night with families with children. So this is coordinated, the coordinated entry system for housing needs. So this not only serves homeless, but also folks that are at risk of being homeless. In the last year, in the last 12 months, we've received 177,000 calls looking for assistance. I know that some of you wanted that number verified, it certainly has been verified. But again, remember, it's for homelessness and homeless prevention. Recent improvements included the ability for a caller to speak to a worker directly, to immediately start the screening process, and we secured new phone numbers, one for homelessness and one for homeless prevention. Next slide. I'm not sure how the guys got 12 slides together, and I got 12 slides alone. What's up with that? This slide shows the local continuum of CARES point-in-time count. We do every year, it's coming up, save the date on your calendar, the end of January, the last Thursday of January. We count for 24 hours. This also includes the Palm Beach County School District data of children that are reported homeless. There are two different definitions that are used, HUD's definition, and then the McKinney-Vento definition. Both describe very different populations. Both describe very different populations. The PIT count, the point-in-time count, focuses on only people that live in, on the street, in their car, or in an unsafe location. The school district counts individuals who are staying with others or living in hotels. So I was raised by my grandmother. I would have been counted in those numbers, because I'm not with my parents. So the left part of the slide shows the number of persons who are either sheltered in shelter, safe havens, or transitional housing, and then versus the unsheltered. Next slide. This slide shows the annual point-in-time collected in January, as I said earlier, and specifically shows the number of veterans. I know veterans is a, is a hot issue across the country, as well as in Palm Beach County. The most recent PIT data shows there was an increase in the number of vets that were sheltered and a decrease in the number on the street. So we're moving in the right direction. We're currently working with Built for Zero, which is a national initiative focusing on ending veteran homelessness in Palm Beach County for good. Gosh, they gave me a lot of slides. Okay. So over 30,000 households were served with emergency funding during this period of time in 2022, with over $113 million spent on preventing homelessness in our community. You can also see the outcomes of other county programs to reduce homelessness. This year, his point-in-time resulted in 106 individuals, less individuals on the street than the year prior. I promise I'm almost done. I promise. In 2022, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue's Mobile Integrated Health Team, which you've heard about earlier, assisted over 4,000 patients, and of those, 574 directly identified as being homeless. The MIH team frequently partners with community services to find innovative solutions to the unique challenges our patients face, including working to establish a medical respite's program for patients identified as homeless. It's coming, two of them. We're super excited. Who are being discharged from the hospital or nursing home. The distribution of comfort kits to local emergency rooms was how we got in the door with the emergency rooms, the hospitals, just becoming friendly visitors and equipping them with things they can give a homeless person as they're checking out. Information on the homeless hot teams, or the homeless outreach teams, have been sent out to every partner that we know of, and we also provide infection prevention items, such as the masks and all the antibacterial stuff. The library, the Office of Community Revitalization, Fire Rescue Youth Services, and many more departments play an important role in addressing homelessness and housing through, through the provision of social services. The county also funds a significant number of community-based agencies aligned with the team's goals. And those are just some of the numbers. And these are some of our partners. We have a lot of partners to make this work. From innovative housing and workforce housing initiatives to providing shelter to those who need support to reach their self-sufficiency goals, we are creating paths to a home. Not a traditional home, but a home. On behalf of the members of our team, we thank you for your time, your interest, your commitment, and your compassion to those less fortunate in Palm Beach County. And Carlos will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The question is for Wendy.
Oh, say Carlos.
Wendy, I'm going to slide 18. I'm, like, in 2017, it seemed like we were really, that's when we really focused on decreasing the homeless for veterans. And, you know, now that it's creeping up, what can we do to, like, really go back and tackle the homeless for veterans? And also, are we working with the VA hospital?
We are.
To try to address this issue?
We are. That's why we brought Built for Zero back in, just because of some of the complications with the VA, to try to patch that road, so to speak, so we would all be facing the right direction. I'm pretty confident that we're there. I'm pretty confident that we're going to end veterans homelessness, or at least be at functional zero, which means every vet that walks in or calls that they're homeless, we will have access to a bed for. Veterans are much like chronic homeless folks, so they have a tendency to hide in encampments. It takes a vet to find a vet. That's why we need the VA.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marino, you are recognized.
Thank you. And to follow up with that, two partners I might suggest. One will be Habitat for Humanities, because they have the Habitat Veteran Build. And the other, several of us have been to events for homes for our troops. So I would just add those as maybe two partners you could reach out to if you need contact information. I'm happy to supply.
We certainly will. There is a big veterans group that meets of social service agencies that serve vets. We will certainly invite them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Almost did, no. All right.
Member Carlos.
No, no, no. I'll get to you, Carlos. We have a lot of answers. I haven't had, you haven't had the question yet. Let's go back to page 18, that Commissioner Bernard spoke about, veterans.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we have the second-largest veteran population in the state. We also have the second-largest VA hospital
Yes, ma'am.
in the state of Florida. By God, we can't, we can't do this alone. Now, what specifically is the VA doing to help us with our homeless vets?
Carlos.
You're on, Carlos.
That's a very complicated answer.
You know, it really isn't. Congressman Brian Mast has been very much of an advocate for our veterans. And I've worked with, with the VA outside of Brian Mast. But this cannot, this, this is wrong. They have got to step up.
So... The VA has offered what they call VASH certificates. VASH is a sister to a Section 8 voucher.
I'm sorry, a sister to what?
A Section 8 voucher.
Oh, Section 8, okay.
Which charges rent at 30% of your adjusted gross income, which you can live on if you're getting Social Security or even a disability. It's 50% service-related. The VA has to apply for those. We have several in our community that are with the West Palm Beach Housing Authority. We, they just opened up and closed already. We, we wanted to, we wanted the VA to apply for those. We had a housing partner with the West Palm Beach Housing, with the Palm Beach County Housing Authority. But because of the VA's internal rules, they have to have a master's-level social worker work in that program who is licensed. They do not have the money for that. So until they can find the money to provide the licensed clinical social worker, they're not going to apply for any more VASH vouchers. So, so that's not an option for us at this point. So we have to think of another way to be able to house these vets without the assistance of a permanent housing voucher.
Well, the Secretary of the Florida Department of Veteran Affairs is coming to the county in early February. Let's meet. Let's sit down. These boys have money. And it aggravates me when any vet goes homeless without the help of the VA. 17 of them commit suicide every day. We've got to stop this.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm going to work with Ms. Baker when General Hartl comes into town, and I will make sure that we'll sit down together and, and get this, get their, the federal government's act in this.
Yes, ma'am.
So I appreciate it, and I appreciate Commissioner Mack bringing it up, because we can't do it alone. And they need help, but the federal government's got to step up. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Carlos.
Great answer, Carlos, great answer.
All right. I don't see anyone else, but I have a question for Carlos.
Yes.
Because I feel bad for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You know, when we look at, we look at housing, and we look at housing affordability, and we look at median, you know, median housing prices, I think it would be, rather than, I'd rather see additional information, a stratification of what those housing costs are, because we're saying 50% are below, 50% are above. So 50% of them are below the, you know, current 600,000, for a single-family home, and we need to also break out versus the multifamily homes as well. So I think if there's a way, you know, as we, you know, move forward and continue to try and work on this, to get a better understanding, you know, because instead of looking at it as just a, in the aggregate, to look at it in a more detailed fashion, I think it, to understand what the inventory is in our community, that might help alleviate some of these challenges.
Yes, I think we can definitely get our hands on some data that shows, as you say, inventory at different price levels and price levels that would serve the various different income groups. That's, that's something we can pull together, for sure.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, thank you very much, and...
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, and glad you had so many slides.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to clarify some of the data, add something to the number of housing. What you see in the handout presentation of the almost 3,000 units from workforce housing from '07 till today, well, those aren't the only units that have been built and/or near construction. We've got roughly about 7,200 other units that have been rehabbed and/or built, single-family and multifamily, that have been also built within that period of time. So this board has actually approved those type projects, or us participating with some of our partners in developing those particular units. And as you know, with our CARES dollars, as well as our... ARPA funds, this board allocated additional dollars, and you also allowed us to reallocate about 40 million more. So we are moving forward with this board's support on getting those dollars done, and not to mention this board's support and definitely appointing Commissioner Bernard as the lead liaison for the $200 million bond that was passed by 55% of our voters. So we'll be working to bring back the allocation process, so we, and have the courts do the validation, so that we can start moving forward with potentially issuing tranches of that next year. So I want this board to know we are definitely dedicated to housing, single-family as well as multifamily. And there's also another project that came in a number of years ago, and we've been working very closely with the company that's bringing it forward. And it's primarily focused on veterans. This particular project straddles two cities, I want to say Lake Worth and...
Palm Springs.
Palm Springs. So we're closely working with them, trying to make this a reality, and that project hopefully will come online in the next year or so. It's my understanding they're going to the Housing Finance Authority to get the initial funding. So we are focused on it. We'll continue to work, but I would love to have some of the VA money to help us house these individuals as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Okay.
Well, we're halfway through. You guys bear with us. The next team up is Environmental Protection Cross-Department Team.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Welcome to our new Commissioners. My name is Natalie Friendberg with the Palm Beach County Office of Resilience. Joining me today are Matt King with the Department of Environmental Resources Management, also known as ERM, and Ron Rice with Cooperative Extension Service. Today, we're here to present on behalf of the Environmental Protection Cross-Departmental Team to give you an update on our fiscal year '22 achievements. So we're a team comprised of various departments whose work includes environmental and sustainability projects. So you can see here, our team includes representatives from 13 different departments. And our six goals are promoting healthy and vibrant beaches, maintaining diverse and resilient ecosystems, protecting and supporting human health, safety, water quality, and quality of life, ensuring a positive experience for residents and visitors, promoting sustainable and resilient practices and principles, and preserving and enhancing our thriving agriculture. Beaches are very important to our county as a source of economic activity and biodiversity, but beaches also play a fundamental role in climate hazard mitigation. It is vital to keep our beaches in the best condition possible. So for Goal One, to sustain healthy beaches, ERM has carried out several beach renourishment projects, placing approximately 1.2 million cubic yards of sand on the county's beaches, maintaining critical protection of county coastal properties and infrastructure. ERM has also worked to protect coastal habitat by carrying out three regulatory sea turtle lighting inspections to increase compliance and enforcement. This graph shows the amount of sand that's been placed on our county beaches. It's a lot. ERM has exceeded the 11-year moving average performance metric goal of 1 million cubic yards by 20% this year, showing consistent progress on beach renourishment. Beaches are the number-one draw for tourists in the area, so making sure that they're nice is very important. In fiscal year '22, we spent about 12 million on these, which was mostly funded by state through Florida DEP funding and also the Tourist Development Council and FEMA. And that 1.2 million tons of sand is equivalent to about half of the Sears Tower being filled with sand, 6.34 government centers, 363 Olympic-sized swimming pools, or 75,000 dump trucks. For Goal Two, we focused on maintaining diverse and resilient ecosystems. When we use the word resilient, we mean that they are healthy enough to resist and recover from natural and human-caused disturbances. And to achieve this goal, we focused on two main topics. First, on wildlife and habitat preservation, our Parks and ERM departments worked on many projects. And these include continuing to expand and maintain spoil islands in the Lake Worth Lagoon, which have served as critical habitat for coastal nesting species, such as the American oyster catcher, helping to nearly double their colony size in 2021. And after decades of absence due to restoration work in the Lake Worth Lagoon, these created islands have become the southernmost ground-nesting location of the American oyster catchers and black skimmers on the Florida East Coast. We've also incorporated 13 acres to the Pine Glades Natural Area to expand the protected habitat there and are continuing to work on the Parks Tree Inventory as part of their re-greening master plan, providing additional wildlife habitat on Parks Lands. This year, we had county volunteers contribute over 55,000 hours to maintaining and improving the county's ecosystems. And on this graph, it shows the amount of the volunteer hours on environmental product, projects for each department. As we can see, these hours have been steadily increasing back to our pre-pandemic levels. And next, I'll pass it off to Matt King from ERM to cover the next two goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Goal Three is to protect and support human health, safety, water quality, and quality of life. For this goal, there are three main themes: safety, compliance, and water quality. For safety, the Office of the Community Revitalization is undergoing the completion of speed hump installation within five CCRT areas. For compliance, ERM has continued wellfield protection and petroleum storage tank inspections and remediation to protect our drinking water. For water quality, Water Utilities has carried out over 83,000 lab tests and was in 100% compliance with all federal and state regulatory requirements. The following slide shows the amount of street sweeping in miles by county engineering stormwater section. This is done in order to avoid flooding and stormwater blockages. Goal Four is to ensure positive environmental experiences for residents and visitors. For Goal Four, we focus on three areas: community engagement, outreach, For Goal Four, we focus on three areas: community engagement, outreach, and placemaking. Starting with community engagement, as you can see from the slide, from Corporate Extension's ambassadors to the Wetlands Program, to ERM's Green Futures and Trailblazers programs, to Park's Nature Ninja Warriors and Project Access, numerous county departments have enacted programs to reach out and engage the often unrepresented communities with nature and the outdoors. The second area is outreach. Through outreach, we managed to establish a necessary connection order in order to build better. This year, between Parks and ERM, there were over 800 events attended by over 12,000 participants to Park's three nature centers, including Riverbend Park and the 37 Palm Beach County natural areas. The county library system has conducted close to 80 environmental programs that attracted over 1,400 participants. And Bounce engaged over 10,000 youth in numerous in-person and virtual events. The third and final area is placemaking, an urban planning term in which through a collective work with the community, we reimagine the public space in order to maximize the connection between people and the places they share. We promote a placebake, placemaking by maintaining 100% of their 37 Palm Beach County natural areas, public use facilities, and trails, and by the opening of Canyon District Park in Boynton Beach, the Orange Bowl Field Phase Two construction at Glades Pioneer Park, and with Parks and Water Utilities partnering on the Green Kay Phase Two 63-acre expansion, which will incorporate additional recreational activities to the public. In this slide, we see the amount of tourist visitations. Our beaches, parks, and natural areas are some of the biggest draws for the tourists to the counties. These numbers show an increase back to and maybe even a little more pre-pandemic levels. Next, Ron Rice, Director of IFIS Corporate Extension, will cover our last two goals.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Next slide, yes. This past year, our team paid close attention to different resilience topics under Goal Five, including energy efficiency, planning and compliance, resource optimization, emissions reduction, resilience funding, and educational outreach. County made good progress on a number of energy efficiency improvements. For example, airports launched a solar energy screening and assessment study to identify potential solar panel solutions and to learn specifics regarding onsite installations. Planning, zoning, and building issued 1,772 permits for solar installations. County continues to increase lighting and energy efficiencies by installing LEDs. For example, in the CCRT areas, the Office of Community Revitalization converted 454 streetlights to LEDs, and meanwhile, engineering converted an additional 555 streetlights. Parks and Rec are in their fifth year of a six-year plan to convert all sports field lighting to energy-efficient technologies with a spring 2023 completion date. Meanwhile, FDO continues to retrofit our office buildings with LED lights. In regards to planning and compliance, resource optimization and emissions reduction, there have been several developments. Airports is finalizing their Sustainability Management Plan, which will gradually be implemented in late 2022, which I guess is now, through 2023. Planning, zoning, and building issued 21 permits for electric vehicle charging stations in the community, and Parks and Rec installed EV stubs at their Canyon District Park. FDO continues to install water bottle refill stations to reduce plastic waste, with several installations right here in our government center. Our Water Utilities Department reclaimed over 27 million gallons of water per day for use as landscape irrigation. Now, we emphasize outreach for Goal Five since we need to educate our communities about sustainability and resilience principles. Our campaign included events, workshops, and educational programs. The Office of Resilience provided leadership on several projects. For example, the Office of Resilience collaborated with the four-county Southeast Florida Regional Climate Change Compact to update the regional climate action plan for this region. In December 2021, the same Office of Resilience hosted the Southeast Florida Regional Climate Leadership Summit, which attracted over 700 participants. Our CDT members supported the Florida Atlantic University Climate Ready Program to prepare students to be effective voices for climate resilience in their communities. Now, this graph shows a steady three-year increase in solar energy permits within unincorporated county, a trend that correlates with county efforts to promote sustainability and resilience principles. This continued focus on renewable energy and energy security initiatives supports community greenhouse gas reductions. The solar panels permitted so far this year are estimated to save over 11 million kilowatt-hours per year. And on average, solar panels save households about $672 in annual energy savings per installation. Our final goal seeks to preserve and enhance our county ag operations. We supported the Western Palm Beach County Farm Bureau with $25,000 in grant funding for the 2022 Sweet Corn Fiesta, which is a family-friendly event that attracted roughly 5,000 visitors, which was almost double the figure from last year. The event distributed 1,100 crates of sweet corn. That's roughly 52,800 ears of sweet corn, if you can imagine that. We delivered 46 educational workshops to 1,661 sugarcane, rice, and vegetable farmers and plant nurseries. Topics included pest identification and control strategies, best management practices for the environment, and recommendations for new varieties, and improved crop management practices. Now, our priority is to keep agriculture workers safe. This includes field workers, heavy machinery operators, workers in the sugar and rice mills, workers in the vegetable packing houses, and also crews working in the lawn, ornamental, and landscape installation sectors. And so to this end, we delivered 82 training events to 1,748 clients, and we delivered 1,783 continuing education units that support state-required licenses and certifications that are related to safety. This graph shows the total outreach to our farming community, including recommended crop production practices and those safety trainings I was mentioning. Now, declines during the pandemic could be expected, but other factors are at play here. Some of our recurrent trainings are Train the Trainer events, so we do expect farms to transition to their own in-house trainings using our training materials. Also, over the past four years, the sugarcane industry funded the Extension Department to develop a series of agriculture safety training DVDs. And these DVDs are now used by the sugarcane safety officers for their own in-house safety trainings. To wrap up our presentation, I want to highlight several collaboration projects that our Environmental Protection Team has focused on. So single-use plastic waste is still an interest. We surveyed our departments about their purchasing habits and perceived reliance on single-use plastic products, and we presented our results to the BCC and showed several options for reducing county usage of single-use plastic products. Our team's exploring options for improving and/or expanding urban tree canopies. We formed an ad hoc tree committee to look into tree canopy projects that could offer benefits like reducing heat island effects, reducing stormwater runoff and flooding, and/or improve the sequestration of carbon emissions. We collaborated to celebrate Earth Day with a BCC proclamation. And this event increased awareness of Earth Day and it highlighted our commitment to environmental stewardship. As part of Earth Day, we produced a social media campaign to showcase county projects that benefit our, our environment. So as we move into fiscal year 2023, our team will continue good habits that include collaboration with multiple departments to capture their diverse expertise and abilities, connect with more community partnerships that can expand our environment reach, focus on current projects that'll make a difference, and implement projects that promote environmental stewardship in Palm Beach County. Speaking for our entire Environmental Protection Team, I want to thank you, our county commissioners, for your time and attention. If you've got any comments or questions, we'll do our best to address them at your convenience. Thanks.
Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Gosh, I feel like, oh, she's the one that's always talking. But just to, actually, this is for ERM, since you were talking about some of your projects. Can you give us a little bit of, because of the hurricane and the beach nourishment that we did, we've had a lot of questions in my office about that. Can you just give us a little update?
I'd be happy to. Good afternoon. My name is Deb Drum. I'm the Department Director for Environmental Resources Management. It's my honor to hold that position. We did great with the beaches from these hurricanes that we had. Because of our efforts on renourishment, you saw the Sears Tower graphic of just how much sand that was. It was significant, but that means that we weren't making the headlines like we saw up the coast in Florida, where there was severe beach erosion occurring that affected infrastructure, roads, buildings. That was not our headline because of that work done on the beaches. So we're very proud of that. It's a great partnership that we have. As part of our partnership with the Tourism Development Council, we appreciate that partnership and we do bring, the vast majority of those funds come from the state and federal government in partnership. So we do a lot of leveraging of dollars to protect our shorelines and protect the infrastructure. And that's the story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? I don't see any other lights. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Next up, the Infrastructure Cross Department Team.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Jake Leach. I'm with the Office of Resilience, and this is the Infrastructure Cross Departmental Team. Our team consists of several members representing approximately 15 county departments and offices, as you can see here. And the goals for the team encompass each department's dedication to providing the county stakeholders and residents with an outstanding level of service and quality of life. You can see our goals here on this slide. Our first goal is to increase resiliency and sustainability of infrastructure. So applying for grant funding for infrastructure resilience has been a collaborative effort between several county departments. It's been largely coordinated through this cross-departmental team. We've been quite successful at applying for grants to fund broad analyses of infrastructure resilience across the county, as well as funding to implement specific infrastructure resilience upgrades. County staff have been working to complete a checklist and reporting requirements to ensure that resilience and sustainability are being considered in county construction projects. We're also looking at sea level rise threats to unincorporated parts of the county through the grant-funded Vulnerability Assessment and Resilience Action Plan. Here are the current sea level rise projections provided by the four-county Regional Climate Compact and adopted by the county in 2020. To help monitor and reduce energy usage at county facilities, an energy manager will actively monitor consumption, expenditures, trends, industry offerings, and needs of personnel countywide. Additionally, we will continue to convert lighting fixtures to light-emitting diode or LED technology as we did with nearly 1,600 fixtures in fiscal year '22. We conservatively estimate that each LED bulb saves over $3 a year, so that's almost $6,000 just in 2022. Motion sensors are being routinely added during renovation and building of certain spaces to turn off the lights when nobody's using the space. Also, Facilities Development and Operations Standards Document is being updated to capture that change and other advances that we're making. Due to our preventative efforts, no accommodations were needed during fiscal year 2022 to maintain county facilities functioning during any operational interruptions. The county has a multi-pronged strategy for electric vehicle infrastructure, such as continuing with the pilot project for providing charges at county locations, and that includes putting charges in at the convention center, which is something we're doing right now, and beginning the transition of our bus fleet to electric. We're also working to amend the code to support an electric-vehicle-ready community. In conjunction with the Office of Resilience and funds from the Federal Aviation Authority, Department of Airports recently completed the first Sustainability Management Plan, resulting in a focus on waste sortation, solar use, and zerriscaping in the near term. And with that, I'll hand it over to Regina Hager with ISS.
Thank you, Jake. Let's look at Goal Two. Continue to preserve existing infrastructure and deliver new infrastructure that does not just conform to industry standards, but which is often cutting-edge. Parks and Recreation, in collaboration with Water Utilities, has identified nine septic-to-sewer projects that will be funded with Surtax and American Rescue Plan Act funds. These projects were originally identified for drain field replacements, but were adjusted as the county is strengthening resiliency efforts to combat the impacts of climate change. 12 sports lighting replacement projects within eight parks were budgeted from fiscal year '19 through fiscal year '22. 10 playgrounds will be renovated in fiscal year 2023 using Surtax funds. A total of $6.3 million was allocated to replace the existing metal halide lights with modern LED lighting. The new LED lighting provides savings on utility costs and reduces light spillover to adjacent communities. Facilities Development and Operations, Water Utilities Department, and Engineering and Public Works completed several projects during fiscal year 2022. Facilities Development and Operations fortified the electronic systems for both, for both the courthouse and the main detention center, while the Water Utilities Department completed 14.5 miles of pipe upgrades. Even unscheduled projects were handled efficiently, which was the case when the George Bush Boulevard Baskel Bridge incurred damage. During a bridge opening on March 3rd of 2022, one of the shafts sheared into two pieces, essentially leaving the bridge inoperable. The bridge was fully operational on April 29th after only 57 days of repairs. Our County Library Department hosted a groundbreaking on September 24th for the new Canyon Branch Library. The new LEED-designed building will boast over 33,000 square feet with an outdoor plaza, an exciting digital media lab and recording studio, large meeting room, and will be equipped to receive solar power and EV charging stations. With the American Rescue Plan Act funding approved by the Board, the county is expanding its IT network infrastructure to additional vital areas, allowing us to successfully create and maintain a sustainable and long-term solution capable of addressing the issue of the digital divide and providing quality broadband to areas of need. We expect the MASH network to be completed by the end of 2026, and we will be extending the Wi-Fi reach at county libraries. Palm Beach International Airport continues to see increases in capacity and passenger levels that have exceeded the 2018 levels and is planning ahead to provide the best experience and facilities for our customers and tenants. As one of the largest water utilities in the state, the Water Utilities Department continues to provide the best value for our customers. As an enterprise department, Water Utilities again received a AAA rating this year. The Green Kay Phase Two project is moving ahead and is expected to be at 90% design phase by year's end. The project was visited and well-received by state officials from the Department of Environmental Protection and the South Florida Water Management District and was awarded $5 million in grant funds. As I mentioned before, the county isn't just meeting industry standards, we're exceeding them. Green Kay is a great example of the county leading the pack. Through our Water Utility Department, the county is leading the nation and state in many ways, including asset management, reuse water, workforce transformation, and environmental stewardship. This year, Water Utilities received the Best Asset Management Implementation Award from the Institute of Asset Management. Palm Beach County Water Utilities Department is the only water utility in the nation to have ISO for asset management. Goal Three is creating safe, healthy, and attractive neighborhoods and communities. Parks and Recreation, recognizing the growing demand Parks and Recreation, recognizing the growing demand for pickleball, added a total of 18 new courts at John Prince Memorial Park, Carlin Park, and Burt Aaronson South County Regional Park. New basketball courts have also been constructed at Gramercy Park through 60,000 in residual bonds, along with capital funding from the Office of Community Revitalization. The design of a new neighborhood center building at Gramercy Park is underway with an estimated 11,000 square feet. Opening is expected in 2024, bringing a much-needed community gathering point to the area. Canyon District Phase 1 opened on September 24, 2022, providing patrons with three-lighted multipurpose fields, an exercise trial, and a restroom concession building. Ten new day-use sand volleyball courts facilities at Carlin Park are scheduled to begin construction late 2022. Expansion projects planned for fiscal year 2023 include Canyon District Park Phase 2, Villages of Windsor Phase 1, and Paulette-Birdic Park. Design is underway for the Aquatic Center and the YMCA Community Center at Lake Little Park and Aqua Crust Pool. The Office of Community Revitalization, in collaboration with several county departments, has completed the countywide Community Revitalization Team Reassessment Study to evaluate existing CCRT areas to ensure they still meet the minimum eligibility criteria for designation and to identify infrastructure and service delivery needs. The new GIS Infrastructure Portal has become a valuable platform for all departments to share and assess CCRT area deficiencies, track current and planned departmental projects, and coordinate service delivery to decrease costs and reduce disruptions to the community. Engineering and Public Works is collaborating with Palm Tran to implement priority signal projects in select sections. An emergency vehicle preemption system is also being developed with fire rescue. Additionally, the county continues to add or refurbish bike lanes and pathways to ensure all modes of transit are kept safe and accessible. As you can see, traffic volumes are returning to pre-pandemic levels. To help keep these travelers safe, our engineering department continues to work with FPNL to update street lighting to LEDs to increase brightness while lowering energy consumption. And now I'll hand you back to Jake.
Thank you, Regina. Goal Four is to increase multimodal travel opportunities and support safe and efficient transportation. Palm Tran's ridership is slowly recovering in fiscal year 2022, with a ridership growth of over 7% compared to the prior fiscal year, which is still below pre-pandemic years, but is on the uptick. Palm Tran continues to maintain on-time performance levels. The Florida Public Transportation Association recently awarded Palm Tran drivers first and second place for 2022 Bus Operator of the Year. This year, Palm Tran also rolled out a new Tap to Pay fare system. Another great successful implementation is the technology improvements for the Go Glades service, which allows passengers to request on-demand ride shares. In September, the board approved making Go Glades a permanent service for the Glades community. As we look to the future, here are our next steps. With continued cross-departmental collaboration, we see several opportunities for joint projects and successes. We're going to improve quality, resilience, and sustainability of infrastructure, find ways to reduce costs and increase funding, and find ways to overcome supply chain, staffing, and price hurdles. On behalf of my Infrastructure Cross Departmental Teammates and myself, thank you for taking the time to listen and for your continued support. At this time, we'll take any questions that you may have for us.
All right. Do we have any questions? I don't see any lights. You guys must have done a superior job.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, Economic Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners and new Commissioners. I'm Sheri Howard from the Department of Housing and Economic Development. And what Keith meant to say was the best for last. Anyway, so we'll go ahead and get started. The Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the importance of economic development as one of its top strategic priorities, and we are well-known as a global destination to work, live, and play. To accomplish that, we recognize that this applies to every resident in Palm Beach County. To that end, economic development activities are carried out through every department and are represented on our team. So just a quick economic development snapshot. Although unemployment is historically low county-wide, below 3%, the average unemployment rate in the Glades remains at 15%. Additionally, housing prices have increased, as we saw earlier, much faster than the wages, creating a housing crisis for newly-created and existing workers, including teachers, healthcare workers, hospitality and service providers, to name a few. According to our industry data from the State Department of Economic Opportunity, these industries represent the top industries, and this is by employment growth, in Palm Beach County over the last year. The two leading industries include leisure and hospitality, and education and health services, which grew significantly. Small businesses continue to grow, with businesses of 25 employees or less representing 93.5% of all businesses in Palm Beach County. So we're now going to talk about our six key economic goals and how the metrics for these goals are met through varying departments in the county. This year, the team focused on our program's return on investment. Where there is currently not a metric utilized to measure that, we are looking to forward to future implementation of metrics to track each program's progress. So Goal One, a stable, diversified, and resilient economic base that maximizes jobs for county residents and capitalizes on emerging industries. Under economic development programs managed by the Department of Housing and Economic Development, over the last five years, every $1 invested by the county leveraged $11.44 in other funding. This includes not only business loan and grant programs managed directly through our department, but it also includes the contract partners we manage, including the Business Development Board, the Black Business Investment Corp., the Center for Technology Enterprises and Development, the FAU Research Park, FAU Tech Runway, and Center for Enterprise Opportunity that all provide technical and other assistance that businesses need, whether they are startup or they are a larger company looking to relocate or expand here. We also see, from the county's overall perspective, that the number of businesses has continued to increase over the last five years by 17.4%. Newer businesses that have received incentives pictured here, on the top picture, include Finfroc, who received $2.5 million from Palm Beach County for their commitment to create 200 jobs in Belle Glade and make a $36 million capital investment in their facility. The Finfroc facility is still under construction, but in the meantime, the company is hiring all sorts of manufacturing and other construction jobs from the county's partner, Career Source, who is holding several job fairs to fill those positions. Because we are a diverse economy geographically, with urban and rural areas, we are also diverse in industry and in population, and we look to ensure that all of our residents are served through our programs. For example, jobs created by income level through our Section 108 Loan Program, as well as race, are also measured to promote upward economic mobility inclusive for all county residents. These jobs are primarily from manufacturing and construction industries. We were recently approved for an additional $14 million in Section 108 Business Loan funding to continue to create these jobs through this program. The Community Service Department's Community Action Program hosts the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, where clients can gain the skills for living wage employment. Community Action pays for the cost of the training through its federally-funded Community Services Block Grant and assists clients in the unemployment process until they are placed. In 2021, 22 participants completed a training certificate and 17 became employed. You can see here in this chart on the right that the county's investment has provided Palm Beach County families with training opportunities, resulting in them having significantly increased incomes in their family. Goal Number Two, growing the tourism and hospitality industry by driving room nights and their associated economic impact. The Tourist Development Council reports revenue streams generated through tourism and hospitality, and there continues to be great news to report. Net rental revenue is the net collections after hotels and non-hotels have paid their taxes. So here's some pretty great numbers. The net hotel revenue came in at $1 billion after taxes, which was 36% above 2019's record of $793 million. Net non-hotels revenue came in at $195 million after taxes, which was up 122% over 2019's record of $88 million. The leisure and travel industry has shown a strong recovery, as we discussed earlier, with the record bed tax collections from September through May of 2022. Fiscal year-to-date collections are estimated to total $77.8 million, shown on the chart on the left. This is 44% higher than our pre-pandemic record of $54 million. These numbers are bolstered by visitors wanting to experience paradise in Palm Beach County. You can also see here in the accompanying charts that marketing efforts have provided a tremendous return on investment in partnership with Palm Beach International Airport, with flight traffic up 60% over the same time last year. The influx of visitors has caused our leisure and hospitality jobs to surge by 13%. So speaking of PBI, our airport was named the fifth-best airport according to Conde Nast Travelers this year, along with Reader's Choice Awards, and Best Domestic Airport in Travel and Leisure Magazine's 2022 World's Best Awards. In 2019, the Florida Department of Transportation estimated the total annual impact of PBI to be at $5.64 billion, resulting in approximately $30,000 to $40,000 in local economic impact per operation, including commercial and general aviation, and they're currently updating those numbers. PBI is busy getting the word out about our award-winning airport, including new programs and flights, for instance, the new non-stop flights to Denver, Raleigh, and Wilmington through Expedia and other social network campaigns. And they leverage their marketing campaigns through cooperative advertising with their tourism partners, including Discover the Palm Beaches and the Cultural Council. Community investment is also integral at Palm Beach County International Airport. They offer honor flights to Washington DC in appreciation of our veterans, and partner with Palm Beach School of Autism, Avalo Airlines, and TSA with a program that hosts students through the ticketing, security, and amenities the airport offers, so they can enjoy a more comfortable experience when traveling. I'm now going to turn it over to Rebecca Schnerman from Parks and Recreation.
Hello. Goal Three is about entrepreneurial opportunities. The Office of Equal Business Opportunity uses several metrics to calculate their return on investment, including initial investment, number of outreach events held, number of participants in attendance, number of vendor registrations and applications for certifications processed as a result of the outreach event, number of contracts awarded, and dollars awarded to small minority and women business enterprises. In fiscal year 2022, the Office of Equal Business Opportunity expended $38,000 on 39 outreach events to more than 1,000 local small and minority business representatives to educate them on the procurement process with Palm Beach County, as well as providing technical assistance. As a result of these efforts, 86 new businesses were certified with OEBO, and over $6 million in contracts were awarded. Additionally, the office was named the 2022 Palm Beach Partner Small Business Advocate of the Year. The county continues to invest in our communities to support economic development. In fiscal year 2022, over $14 million were invested in parks' capital projects. From 2018 to 2022, the Office of Community Revitalization invested $1.4 million for park improvements, $887,000 for street lighting, and $150,000 for traffic safety measures in neighborhoods located in CCRT areas. These areas include under-resourced neighborhoods and unincorporated Palm Beach County and the Glades region. Investment in parks has a considerable return on investment for the communities they serve. According to the Florida Recreation and Parks Association Impact Calculator, the development of Canyon District Park, located in West Pointon Beach, creates a significant return on investment resulting in $6.3 million in incremental property values, $108,000 in incremental tax revenue, millions in healthcare cost savings, $39,000 in environmental savings, and will serve at least 1,000 youth in out-of-school programming. In 2018, the Orange Bowl Committee selected Glades Pioneer Park, which is located in Belle Glade, as a recipient of a $1.5 million matching grant. These grant dollars were used to construct a synthetic turf field, neighborhood center, and restrooms. This investment will result in at least 2,500 youth served, 206 related jobs, $49,000 in environmental savings, and millions in healthcare cost savings. Small investments can lead to big outcomes as well. The Office of Community Revitalization allocates a total of $150,000 annually through the Neighborhood Engagement and Transformation, or NEAT, grants program. This program provides up to $10,000 for the implementation of neighborhood improvement projects in designated residential CCRT neighborhoods. These funds are leveraged with 100% match of in-kind and/or cash contributions from the community. Thousands of residents benefit annually from the implementation of these projects. Funding can be used for projects such as neighborhood beautification, sustainability, outreach and capacity building, public safety and crime prevention, community gardens, and emergency preparedness projects. I will now turn the presentation over to Ike Powell from the Youth Services Department.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to highlight our final two goals, Goal Five and Six, and to close out our presentation this afternoon. In terms of Goal Five, support and promote a viable and diverse agricultural industry, the county's Cooperative Extension Office provides the Expanded Food, Nutrition, and Education Program to remain at the forefront of nutrition education efforts to reduce nutrition insecurity for low-income families and youth today. The fiscal year 2022 program budget for Palm Beach County was $484,000, $484,000 and $30,000. These grant funds support staffing of six nutrition educators and a part-time program assistant supervised by one of our extension agents. Staff create partnerships to organize cohorts of target clientele for series-based nutrition education classes. Research indicates for every dollar spent on programmatic, on programming, $10.64 can potentially be saved on healthcare costs, and $2.48 can be saved on food expenditures. Thus, approximately $5.2 million saved on healthcare costs and $1.2 million saved on food expenditures. Goal Number Six, enhance and expand opportunities for paid and unpaid student and apprentice programs to meet local needs. Our team continues to focus efforts, strategies, and metrics for recruiting, hiring, and tracking student, intern, and apprentice positions here at the county. Currently, 282 student and nine apprenticeship positions have been fielded in various county departments. The Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Cadet Battalion is chartered by the Florida Fire Chiefs Association and sponsored by Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. Their focus is on preparing young men and women for career in fire service and/or the medical field. There is an average of 150 teens in cadet program at any given time, 50 to 60 new teens join each year. Since 2019, Fire Rescue has hired 42 cadets. Thanks to our county administrators' efforts, in 2018, Palm Beach Lakes Community High School accepted their first class of ninth graders into their new Fire Academy program. They had their first graduating class May of this year. The program was made possible by a collaborative partnership with Palm Beach State College, the School District of Palm Beach County, the Education Foundation of Palm Beach County, J.P. Morgan Chase and Company, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, River River Beach Fire Rescue, and West Palm Beach Fire Rescue. In addition to their high school diploma, students earn two industry credentials, firefighter one, and emergency medical responder. The new Fire Academy will help increase diversity, which is The new Fire Academy will help increase diversity, which is a goal shared by all fire departments. This is another example of growing our own within the community. Students interns and apprentices provide tremendous support to various county departments while gaining valuable work experience and developing both hard and soft skills. For example, during fiscal year 2022, the Youth Services Department continued to serve as a trainee placement site for seven psychology doctoral interns, postdoctoral fellows, and doctoral-level practicum trainees. In addition, 171 student and intern positions were provided by our community-based agencies that received funding from the county's Board of County Commissioners through the Youth Services Department. In terms of return on investment, the feedback we obtained from students and interns indicates that they benefit economically as well as the skills gained, including... You see the skills listed here on the Word Cloud of the graduation cap, and you see skills such as communication, problem-solving, multitasking, interpersonal confidence, just to name a few. So in conclusion, our next steps for this team is to continue to develop and refine strategies to address the county's goals for economic development based on changing climate. We'll continue to evaluate metric outcomes to determine the effectiveness of strategies and modify those strategies to address any negative outcomes should they arise. We'll continue to explore methods to quantify return on investment for county programs and expenditures. And on behalf of the Economic Development Cross-Department Team, I want to extend our thanks to everyone for your time. We're happy to answer any questions you may have for us.
All right. Do we have any questions on this presentation? I see Commissioner Moreno has her lightly.
Got to go for it. Anyway, interesting article, Keep Florida Fishing. It says that outdoor recreation economy adds $41.9 billion to Florida's GDP, and that is 3.3% of our state's GDP, and that the state also created over 400,000 outdoor recreation jobs. I just want to say to the county, I think I said it the day, the first day I got in office, was being a professional athlete, I wanted to see our Parks and Rec Department just shine and grow, and I see everything that you've done, the grants you've received, the awards you've gotten, and I just want to say kudos to all of you, and I'm looking forward... This is more of a comment than a question. I am actually looking forward to Peanut Island and the restoration that goes on there because I think that'll be a gem in our Parks and Rec Department. So thank you for all that you all do, and this was from all of us up here, since I'm the first one talking. This is phenomenal presentation because it really does show how all of our different departments who have certain specialties or certain things that they like have come together to really break down the silos and show just what we are able to do and how we're able to do it. I know this presentation might have seemed a little dry to some people. I actually love all the statistics, so I was happy to have it. But you all do an amazing job of giving us this information, and I know your doors are always open for whatever questions or comments we have in the future, and I do appreciate you taking the time and coming down to Commission and being here at 4:00 on a day when we all thought we might be out of here a little early, but thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to really thank the county administrator for having, you know, this vision to present this to this board, and so in that way to keep us on the right path. I have to say, you know, Marcella and Keith, this was the best presentation. Typically, I'm like rushing y'all because it's a lot, but today's presentation is just, it's getting better and better, and so I just want to thank the both of you. Sherri, thanks for leading the group effort because this is, this really keeps us the right way, and I just want to congratulate y'all on doing such a phenomenal job today. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized. Vice Mayor.
That's all right. This is Palm Beach County. This is Team PBC. Thank you, county administrator, because on a day when we welcome two new commissioners, you have seen more than just a snapshot of what we do as government, and what we do as government is good. Thank you, all of you.
Mayor, if I may, just, I just wanted to say, we could not do this without the vision and leadership and commitment of our county administrator, our CEO. I mean, it's just tremendous amount of support she gives us in terms of implementing this strategy. We didn't want to just create a strategy on paper. We wanted one that was actionable, that involved all of the departments and broke down silos, and she has been committed to making that happen and supporting all of the team. So as the Director of Strategic Planning and Performance Management, I could not be proud, prouder to be part of Team PBC. I'm tongue twy, tongue twy. And Marcella, I call her Superwoman. I call her Almighty Isis. She is my right hand in making sure we get all of this done, and I really appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
Great. And I just, just to wrap up, I just, Madam Administrator, Mr. Clinkstale, to our department heads and to our staff, I mean, it's clear because this program, I want to say, began right around when I, when I came on board, and to watch it come to fruition of breaking down the silos, because that was the initial sort of goal, was to get the departments that are, you know, working on similar projects, programs, and ideas to come together, to work together, to break down those silos, and it's clear from the presentation we had today that that effort is, is not only succeeding, it's paying us dividends by having that cross-germination. So kudos to you all, and really appreciate that. And if there's nothing else, I would like to ask if we take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back for our last item.
Thank you.
With that, Madam Administrator, we recognize you, and our last and final item on 2024 budget.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to the board. This has been a long day, an exciting day for our new board members that joined us, and I know it's a lot of material that we've put before you, and we are happy to sit down with you to go through it. I think the budget packet that we're going to start in next, I actually sat down with you on that already, and we'll, we're happy to sit down again. It is a lot of information to absorb as soon as you walk in the door. But I do also want to thank the board for your support because you do allow me to move our staff forward on your directives and sometimes on things that we're recommending to you. Our strategic, our cross-functional strategic teams are areas that I'm extremely proud of. I came in with that idea, staff made, you allowed me to do it, and staff made it happen. So we're very, very pleased. There are cost savings that we've realized, having the departments work with each other, and I thought each of the teams did an outstanding job today. So thank you for your patience in allowing us to complete it. That is, those strategic priorities are a major key to us developing our incoming budget cycle. And so keep, Marcella keeps us on task and making sure that we're moving forward, and Sherri is held responsible if it does not happen. So she makes sure that it happens.
That's nice.
So as we begin the budget process, we come before the board to receive direction on, regarding the board's strategic priorities, and those are the priorities that you have in front of you. And what we need to establish, if these will remain your strategic priorities as we begin the budget process. I know that I just closed the budget, but it is time to start all over again for a budget. And so if this, unless otherwise directed, will maintain the current strategic priorities that are on the list. They're broad, so they encompass a lot of issues that you're interested in, and it also helps us to complete the processes that we lay out in our strategic priorities. And so if there are no different directions on priorities, we will move forward. Okay? Those particular priorities, as we develop our budget for '23, '24, we will utilize those, and what we do is we put together our budget manual, and staff knows that whatever they're asking for has to tie to these strategic priorities. Okay? So going on to the next page for this fiscal year, which just began October 1, that will run through September 30, 2023, we currently have a milled rate of 4.715, lowered after 11 consecutive years at 4.7815. Our total gross budget is 6.7 billion, of which 1.9 billion is the general fund. The general fund appropriated reserves are 260.4 million, up from 70.7 million over fiscal 2022. We want to continue to increase our reserves so that we will be self-sufficient in case we have a disaster here in Palm Beach County. We won't be waiting on the cavalry to come save us. It's nice when they do get here and we can get reimbursed for expenses, but our residents don't have to wait to get that. It also helps us with our bond rating. It also includes a third and final, this year's final phase of the Evergreen Compensation Study, which was implemented on October 1 of this year, roughly about 3.4 million. That Evergreen Study, it had been at least 35 years if then, if we had done one. And so we were losing a lot of staff. We needed to be competitive and maintain the outstanding staff that we have on board. This board did allow us to do the Evergreen Study. We phased it in over a three-year period, and I think that, you know, in the next five years, we'll need to do another study in order to ensure that we're being competitive. The board also allowed me to allocate a 6% increase across the board for our employees, so again, to remain competitive. There are more jobs than there are people to fill jobs, and so we're competing with not only our own municipalities within our county, but throughout the state and the nation. So we need to ensure that we're properly compensating staff. It also includes 10 million annual allocation for housing out of Avalorm funding, in addition to the other grant dollars and the revenue, yeah, and the general obligation bond that was just voted on by the voters. We do not have any dollars in there because we have not issued any of the bond proceeds. On 2020, on page four, 2023 sources of funds by category, it lays out, the largest is our current property tax of 1.6 billion, 24.9%. Fund balance of 2.7 billion, 40.5%. Our inter-fund transfers, 750 million, 11.2%. Charges for services, 627 million. Intergovernmental revenue, 629 million, and then license, permit, and other taxes, about 309 million. Our total appropriation budget, the 6.7 billion, roughly is made up of public safety costs, which is 23.4, and then we move on to reserves, which is 1.2 million, almost 1.3. We move to our transportation, which is 11.3. It makes it up. And then four is our inter-fund transfers, along with general government, which is 10.4%. And then other expenses, 1.2%, also human services at 1.2.1%. And some of this is new, so I don't want to make assumptions. When we talk about a fund, I've laid out the various types of funds that we are required to set up and separate based upon our GASB, which is our General Government Accounting Standards Board. Each fund must be balanced per Florida statute, and that is revenues equal expenditures. The statute requires it, and it is used to maintain control over resources that have been segregated for specific activities or objectives. And so I've laid those out. The total budget breaks down to general fund, I'm sorry, governmental funds, which include general funds, special revenue fund, debt service, capital projects fund, and then the remaining portion is proprietary funds, and that is our enterprise funds along with the internal service funds. And I did provide a description of each of those. Our total budget by fund is general fund, 28.3%. We then move to special revenue fund of 21.1%. Capital projects fund is, makes up 25.3%, WOD makes up 13.7%, Airport, 6.6%, Internal Service Funds, 3.8%, and then debt service, 1.3%. Then we break it down to property taxes. Property taxes, as shown on a previous slide, makes up roughly about 24.9% of the overall $6.7 billion budget. But then we break it down so that we're, when we're looking at apples to apples, of the property tax, they total 1.6 million, a billion with a B, and that is made up of roughly 1.2 billion, 72% of it is for our countywide operating taxes and general fund. And you'll see, based on the pie chart, what makes up that particular segment of it. Sheriff and other constitutionals, judicial, financially-assisted agencies, BCC departments, other agencies, capital projects, and community redevelopment agencies. The other slice of the pie, 23% of property taxes are covered with a fire rescue MSTU taxes, and that covers their operating as well as their capital cost. Library operating and voted debt makes up roughly about 4.6%, and then countywide voted debt makes up 0.4%. Our general fund revenues by categories equals the 1.897 million, billion, sorry. Our current property taxes, 1.2 billion, 63%. Fund balance makes up 18.2%, inter-fund transfers make up 0.6%, charges for services makes up 2.4%, and internal governmental revenue makes up about 13%. Our license permits and other fees make up about 2.4%. General expenses by function, the sheriff has law enforcement, which he's a separate constitutional officer. However, he is funded by the Board of County Commissioners and property taxes, along with revenues that he also generates. But their budget is roughly about 32.5%. That is law enforcement. The other component that by law the county must fund, and if the sheriff decide he does not want to perform these functions, we would still be responsible for performing those functions, and that is corrections and judicial. So adding those two slices together makes up roughly about 44% of our overall general fund budget. The remaining, our BCC departments make up 25.3%, reserves are 13.8%, capital and non-departmental make up 9%, debt service makes up 3%, other constitutional officers make up roughly about Our general, I just added this sheet in here to give you a look at history on the last five years, what our budgets look like from general fund budget. When you look at our net operating budget on the next slide, back in '07, the Avalorm-funded county departments and the sheriff was pretty much close and equivalent to each other. But since that time, of course, inflation and population has increased, so you see both of the departments going up, but the sheriff has increased by roughly 113.7%, and we have increased roughly about 47.9%. The next slide just kind of gives you a graphic of what I just shared with you. The next slide just kind of gives you a graphic of what I just shared with you, where we are. The green line is the sheriff's budget since '07 till 2023. The blue, the black line is Tabor, which is population and the CIP. I'm sorry, CPI. Then we move on to the lighter blue line. And that particular blue line combines the sheriff and all BCC departments. The actual green line is the blue line, I'm sorry. Green line is the Avalorum county-funded departments. And then the blue line shows the taxable value. The next slide pretty much shows you that over the years, especially during the downturn in the economy, we significantly reduced the number of positions in the county under the BCC. And we are slowly trying to regain them. Our population continues to grow, but we have not kept pace with the growth of population and the demand for services. So our staff definitely works hard. We've automated a number of systems. We will continue to automate. But automation does not always equal a reduction in staffing. Because sometimes you need staff to make the automation work. So we're continuing to balance both. And you will see us come forward as we go through budgets, slowly increasing the staffing level. So for 20, that's 2023. For 2024, today was a crucial day for us. That's the Budget and Strategic Priority Workshop. I am moving forward with what we have laid out as our strategic goals and developing our budget based upon that. Departments will start their budget development in January. Budget, budgets are due to OFMB by mid-March. Management team will occur in May. Initial budget workshop with this board will be June 13. And that is scheduled for a 6:00 PM meeting. We used to have it during the day. And then a board decided we want to do it in the evening. So again, that is a decision left up to this board on whether you want to keep it in the evening or you want to change it back to the day. But I would need that direction in order to change it. The board will set the maximum millage rate on July 11, 2023. That is a morning, a regular morning meeting. Once you set the maximum millage rate, you can go down, but you can't go higher once that millage rate has been established. Our first public hearing is tentatively scheduled for September 12 at 5:05 PM. And our second public hearing, which you will then adopt the budget, will be September 19 at 5:05 PM. And these dates, the public hearing dates are, and the June date, are set on a regular BCC date. So you don't have to add another date to your schedule. Just be a long day. For 2024, our budget additional considerations. Of course, we'll continue with the affordable workforce housing and possibly adding dollars or continuing with the same rate that we're adding from Avalorum. Continue to build the CIP. Also, continue to build reserves and prepare for leveling off of property value increases. Because we do think they're going to start leveling off. Our next slide, staff, definitely Sherry. Work with the property appraisers office to get a feel of what they're projecting as far as values continuing to grow or level off. So what we're projecting in the budget that I have before you for the next five years. For 2024, we're looking at an 8%. Whereas this year, there was an unprecedented 15% increase. But we don't believe that's going to occur again. So we're down to, we're decreasing it down to 8%. And then for the remaining three years out, we're looking at possibly 5%. We will always be coming back to you every year to, once we receive more information from our property appraiser, we'll make the appropriate adjustments as we come back to this board. But when we look at 2024, as I said, we have to balance the budget. Revenues and expenditures have to equal. And what we're looking at in order to, based on the 8% projected increase, looking at the shortfall for a simple majority vote, I'm looking at a $92 million deficit. If we look at it projected on a shortfall for the current millage rate of 4.715, we're looking at 38.9 million. Our current millage, based on our current millage rate, we would then need a supermajority vote when we come back to you to maintain the current millage rate that this board did reduce in fiscal '23. So I just wanted to share that with you. And then the out years projects the same thing. And our deficits continue to grow. Part of what we'd also like to just share with you is the types of bonds. Because you hear people always talk about the board issuing bonds, et cetera. General obligation bonds are one set of bonds, but that has to go out to the voters in order to approve. Currently, our debt service is funded by a dedicated line on our property tax bills. And it's roughly about 26.2 million that's outstanding today for general obligation bonds. For non-Avalorum, Avalorum bonds, the debt service is funded by county, non-Avalorum revenues being pledged to pay those bonds back. All revenues are pledged with the exception of Avalorum. And that's roughly about 563.6 million outstanding as of 10/1/2022. Our revenue bonds, when we say revenue bonds, that refers to our debt service fund by user fees, water utilities bonds and airports bonds. And those two total roughly about 180 million that's outstanding as of 10/1 of 2022. We are very, very proud of our AAA bond rating when it comes to our general obligation bond. That we've received those AAA rated for GO bonds by Standards and Poor's, Fitch, and Moody's. So all three rating agencies have given us general obligation bonds, which means our bonds are very hot in the market. People don't mind investing in Palm Beach County general obligation bonds because we're steady and we're worth investing those dollars. So we tend to get a very favorable rate when we go to the market, very favorable. Our non-Avalorum bonds, and this is unusual, but we received a AAA rated by Standards and Poor's for even our non-Avalorum bonds. That says volumes for our board because of your stewardship. And also, we have a AA rated by Fitch and a 1, small a, 1 rated by Moody's. So we're still in very good shape even when it comes to our non-Avalorum bonds. Our revenue bonds, oh, sorry. My bond manager over here is telling me I should be highlighting the fact that only 49 counties in the country have a AAA rated bonds. And only four counties in the state of Florida that have it. So we're really pleased and want to maintain our AAA bond rating.
So that's, that's 40 out of 3,000 counties in the country?
Thousand six.
And four out of 67 counties in the state.
And then revenue bonds, as I stated, was water utilities. They've got AAA rated Standards, Poor's, and Fitch for utilities. That's unusual as well. And then, I'm sorry?
And Moody's.
And Moody's. Airport bonds, A-plus rated by Standards and Poor's as well as Fitch. And then an A-1 rated by Moody's. Again, it all lays out to your support in what we're doing. And then I've actually laid out, and I won't go through all of the verbiage, our bond debt and bond ratings. But we're happy to talk about them all day long. Then, of course, the NAV revenue bond proceeds are not backed by Avalorum revenues. The NAV revenue bonds are funded by all unrestricted revenues in the general fund and some special revenue funds. And then bond proceeds must be used for a paramount public purpose. GO bonds are backed by the credit and taxing power of the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners. Countywide, they're assessed. And debt service is funded by a separate millage rate line item on your property tax bill. It is not included in the county's 10-mil cap. Bond proceeds must be used for, again, paramount public purpose housing. So, and then I've got a listing of our history on GO bonds here in the county. So it is not new, issuing GO bonds. Our past boards, as well as our future boards, will look at whether to go with GO bonds versus our revenue bonds. So we're not, our non-Avalorum bonds, I'm sorry. So we're looking for some of the debt to start rolling off in the next couple of years. So really, the only debt we would then have for GO bonds would be the housing, which just recently passed. And speaking of what just recently passed, is the referendum, which was approved on November 8. The board approved the bond resolution today. We will be sending it to the courts for validation. Staff worked with our financial advisor and our underwriter, along with bond counsel, will work with them very closely on when it's time to issue the bonds. We will be bringing back to this board a schedule, timeline on what will happen when, as it relates to these bonds. And move forward. And we definitely feel that it will make a difference. The bond is, as we issue it in tranches, will give us a revolving loan fund for projects to bring restricted units onboard. But that is just, it is not the panacea. It is not the cure-all. So we'll continue to go after grants. We'll continue to allocate some additional Avalorum dollars. But that dedicated funding source that will be a revolving loan fund will definitely help us toward meeting that goal. So the 200 million is, will be taxable for a 20-year maturity. We'll issue the first tranche, we believe, in April of 2023, if not a little later. It can be in multiple issues over several years. The annual debt service for 100 million taxable.
8.7?
8.7.
8.7 million. And then the taxable property values for debt service is roughly about 255.5 billion. The estimated millage rate, based on 8.7 million, equals in debt service, 0.0315 mils. And for each 100,000 of taxable property taxable, the taxpayer pays $3.15 annually. Roughly a $325,950 taxable property. Median assessed value of 375,950, less 50,000 for homestead exemption. Per our 2023 proposed budget, a person would pay roughly about $10.26. And then we're just looking at our debt service. And our 200 million kind of shows you as the parks and the waterfront bond drops off and what we project will occur with the proposed 200 million and what you'll be paying. So that concludes our presentation. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Madam Administrator. As always, very appreciative and very impressed with the outlook. I know we have some challenges. But I think it's important to remember the moment in time that we have here before us with two new commissioners that bring, I assume fiercely independent and unique perspectives about what they want to see this county do and where they want to see it go and how we integrate that into our overall strategic priorities. So I'm looking at the budget calendar. And obviously, to execute on strategic priorities, the crafting of the budget is very important. So it looks like the budgets start to develop. And you mentioned earlier in your comments that your department heads are cognizant and bound, really, by the strategic priorities that the board puts forward. And I'll do an internal, you know, look inside my heart to see where, if my strategic priorities need to change. But they'll probably be very similar to what this board has identified in the past. My point is, is that at some point, the board needs to have an opportunity to have the voices heard from not just the two new commissioners, but the whole board to see which priorities we want to continue on and which priorities we can change. And so what's the vision for allowing that, what should be very robust discussion to occur?
Well, it's really late, and I know everybody's tired. But today would be the day to give me your opinions. We can always bring this back at the December 6 meeting to have that discussion as well.
Sure. And, you know, I'm sure that the new commissioners have an idea of what their strategic priorities are. That's what they ran on. But I think it's, would be fair and effective to give them some time to acquaint themselves with this government that is very large. And it, and it's a lot to digest. I think just today was, you know, I remember when I first came on, it's a lot to digest in one day. So I think it would be fair for all of us to collectively have an opportunity in the future to sort of ratify and amend our strategic priorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Just to clarify for the strategic priorities, are they in any general order, or these are just everything we want to focus on?
It's everything this board has directed us to focus on.
Thank you.
Right, Commissioner Moreno.
Microphone thingy. We do it all the time. We have workshops and, you know, this is an ongoing process. And so obviously, it sounds like we're going to be doing this again. I know your departments will start developing their budgets when we walk out this room, when we walk out this room today. But I do think a continued discussion in December is important. And if we need to have a workshop, since we have the time, we may want to continue that to really give a better focus to all of us. Strategic priorities do change. We satisfy some, get new ones. So that is what we can do in the future. I do have a couple of questions actually about the budget.
Okay.
So we just voted in a two, and this might be, you know, a change in priority. We just voted in, some of us did anyway, a $200 million housing bond. But last year, we gave direction to put $10 million aside for housing. So I guess one of the questions for the rest of the board is, we have $200 million, we have all of the other funds that we have. Do we keep the additional $10 million that are being funded by Avalorum taxes in that pot? Or do we put them towards another priority? So that would be one question that I have for discussion for our commissioners and then for you all. And then, I got way too many questions here. And you know what? I'll save my questions. Let's hear what everyone else has to say. And then I could probably put them all together for you. And you all can work on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno, regarding the question regarding the $10 million that's been allocated from Avalorum. I believe that we're kind of like early in the process where today we did the authorization. And it'll take 90 to 120 days before we're able to do the bond validation. And then also, this board will get the chance to have a discussion in regards to the bond allocation process. And I think that at a later date, we'll be able to revisit this issue. So in that way, if we need to lower the 10 million, this board can do that once we're closer to validation.
Right. I don't see any other lights. So with that, it sounds like we're going to have a further discussion on priorities at some point next month. And other than that, I think that's, there were some, that's consensus we have. With that, I want to thank you for your presentation to your staff, to the Office of Financial Management, what is it? Office of Management and Financial?
Management and Budget.
Budget, okay. All right. With that hearing, is there anything for the good of the order? Commissioner Bernard.
Since this is the first board meeting, can we do like commissioner's comments?
I would be happy to have commissioner's comments. Okay. So we will start in, okay, I'm, look, I'm flexible. So we'll start in reverse order. So Commissioner Bernard, number seven.
I was asking for it. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to invite my colleagues and everyone to participate in the Economic Mobility Summit that will take place on Monday, December 5, 2022. It was postponed due to the hurricane, and also you could visit, please go to securingourfuturepbc.org for more information. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And so moving on to Commissioner Kerner.
No comments, just congratulations, everybody, on your new positions, your new titles in terms of mayor, vice mayor, solid waste authority, new duties. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you to the staff, as always.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, Commissioner Woodward. What?
You skipped six.
Oh. Oh, wait, I'm going, I went up, I went, I went backwards. Okay. Okay. District six. Commissioner Baxter, sorry.
I just wanted to thank staff for such a smooth transition, onboarding, being very accommodative. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that. Everyone is very, very professional, very respectful, and helped answer any questions that I had coming around. The only policy issue that I think I ran into was just one, so mayor, without objection, I would like permission to kind of start discussions on how our three staff members receive their pay. I'd like to base it more on a congressional type of pay where we kind of get a pot and then pay from that, and I just want to be able to start discussions on that so we can get the best qualified staff to help us.
Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Baxter, I'm glad that you're bringing this up, but I think that what we'd love to be able to do is to see what other counties are doing. I know Miami Dade, they also have a pot of dollars that they give to their commission staff, so if we can do some research regarding this, so in that way, if we're having a discussion, then we would know what other counties are doing.
Commissioner Kerner.
I'm certainly happy to support Commissioner Baxter in this analysis. As, as part of whatever item comes back or how, whatever context it comes back in, I think it would be helpful for us to review what the current policy is and what the current ordinance is. I think the policy set by an ordinance specifically, I recall that when I came in, we made some amendments to it as well. So if we could get sort of an overview of our, our process and current system, that'd be helpful for me. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Let's see, now where are we? We're at six. I skipped, let's go back to four. I think I'll get eventually, let's see, five. We'll get, we'll get, you come just before me, so. So we will go to four. Thank you, Commissioner Woodward.
Thank you, and it's okay, you're new at the mayor and we're new at everything. I'd like to thank staff and all of the fellow commissioners for today. It's been a long day for, for us, and I know it's been a long day for you, too. I appreciate all of you the past week who have helped me get through this process and get ready for Monday, which is going to be another very long day, but I do appreciate it, and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you. And then we'll move to Commissioner Moreno in District One.
Why, thank you. Thank you for the birthday wishes. Woo-hoo. Nice way to spend my birthday, I have to say. And welcome to our new commissioners. We actually, though we differ sometimes in opinions, we do, we are collegial and helpful, so I hope you do feel that from all of us. It's important. The mayor has a role of bringing all of us to the middle, and I do congratulate the mayor on assuming this position and the vice mayor on, on her new position. And staff, again, you know, we always do say thank you because we do realize the yeoman's job that you do. And I'd also like to say thank you to my staff today for stuffing me with chocolate, because, you know, chocolate is a food group. So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and kick off to the holiday season. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. I just feel very honored to be serving as vice mayor of this board and especially as your vice mayor, Mayor Weiss. I don't know if vice sax goes very well together, but you can just call me Maria, as we used to say. And I do caution you, mayor, that you're surrounded by two Marias, so you're going to make sure that your ship of state, yeah, goes, goes pretty straight. I am very excited about our new commissioners. It is always important for any governmental body to have citizen politicians, citizen servants, public servants, and I look forward to hearing your fresh thoughts, and I really encourage you to give us bold new thoughts, because it will freshen our, our collegial group here. And I want to thank, when we thank staff, it's really their captain of the ship, which is, it's Baker, for making sure that we have a budget and you understand the numbers very well, but that we're fluid. I came in two years ago to a worst pandemic in the history of the United States, and, and then in the last couple of weeks, we had two hurricanes in November. So we always have to stay nimble on our feet, make sure that we are prepared for whatever may come our way, but never so entrenched in certain priorities that we lose sight of the future. So I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. I feel very full of gratitude for my family are waiting for me eagerly at home to cook and to, and to my colleagues here on our commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I'll just wrap up again with my thanks to staff for help making this transition as easy as possible for everybody, to congratulate our new commissioners for joining us on the dais and looking forward for your input. And Vice Mayor, I have to tell you, when I came on board, when I ran for office, I still have up on my door at home, the article of when I, when I first ran for office, for this office, I was listed as a community activist. So that's, that's what they do when you're retired and you don't have a job, you're a community activist, so I guess I'm a citizen as well. But I do want to wish everybody out there a very happy Thanksgiving. I want to thank all the nonprofits and all the people in our community who have donated food and their resources to make sure that so many in our community that are, that do struggle are able to celebrate Thanksgiving in a meaningful way with their families. I, I know there were a number, and they're still coming up, giveaways of turkeys and food for our community. I think we're doing one at our senior center for seniors upcoming at the Lake Worth Mid-County Senior Center, and we'll make sure we get that information out to the community. But that, we have a very generous and compassionate community, so thank you all, and thank you for your patience today, and wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving. With that, this meeting is adjourned.